1.1 call meeting to order, 1.2 pledge of allegiance and can I get Ms. Gallardo to lead us please?
Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Thank you so much, 1.3 approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please.
Mrs. Grande?
Aye.
Motion passed, 2.0 special presentations, recognitions, resolutions, 2.1 resolution and recognition of Dr. Margaret Hill Day. And I will start to with Ms. Felicia Alexander.
Thank you President Sivios. Whereas Dr. Margaret Finum Hill was born on December 17th, 1940 in Virginia. And whereas Dr. Margaret Hill grew to love education, earning a bachelor's degree from Norfolk State University, a master's degree in educational administration from Cal State San Bernardino, and a doctorate from the University of Redlands. And whereas Dr. Hill began her educational career as a teacher at San Bernardino High School in 1971, and later became a vice principal and principal, spending the last 16 years before her retirement from SBCUSD as the principal of San Andreas High School. And whereas after her retirement, Dr. Hill returned to work at the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools office in 2006 as an assistant superintendent until her second retirement in 2012. And whereas Dr. Hill was the author of two books. It's all about the children and from share cropping to non-stopping reflections on life from a veteran educator. And whereas throughout her life, Dr. Hill served several nonprofit community-based clubs and organizations, including the Kiwanis of Greater San Bernardino, Highland Women's Club, Time for Change Foundation, Highland Family YMCA, San Bernardino Black Cultural Foundation, the SBCUSD Mom Mob, the National Security, I'm sorry, the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa, and many more, many others. And whereas Dr. Hill's work has been honored and recognized over the years, including the San Bernardino County School Boards Association's Distinguished Service Award, the Association of California School Administrators Valuing Diversity Award, and the Calist in Education Award from Cal State UC, Cal State San Bernardino College of Education. And whereas in 2002, Dr. Hill helped establish Maggie's Cafe, a student-operated restaurant on the campus of San Andreas High School, where students could learn business and culinary skills, and that was named in her honor. And when the restaurant, and when that restaurant closed, Maggie's Cafe was rededicated at SBCUSD's Professional Development Center. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District honored Dr. Hill in 2019 by naming the remodeled boardroom, the Dr. Margaret Hill Community Room. And whereas Dr. Margaret Hill passed away on December 19th, 2021, a few days after her 81st birthday, bringing great sorrow to her family, her friends, and many lives she touched throughout her educational career. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, thus hereby recognize Saturday, January 18th, 2025, as Dr. Margaret Hill All About the Children Day, and encourage all schools to participate in the members' activities. So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Medina. Vote please.
Ms. Grande?
President? Aye.
Motion passed, 2.2 resolution and recognition of Black History Month. And I will actually ask our student board members, Ms. Gallardo?
Aye. Whereas Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, traces back to 1915, when the father of Black History Month, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, now known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, ASAH. And whereas Dr. Woodson established the celebration of Negro History Month, History Week, which was celebrated for the first time during the second week of February 1926. To correspond with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, both men who were great American symbols of freedom. And whereas in 1976, President Gerald Ford issued the Black History Month proclamation, calling upon Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas Black History Month recognizes the significant contributions of African-Americans throughout our nation's history, as well as Black people throughout the world, through their contributions in arts, entertainment, law, politic, law, politics, sciences, sports, and so much more. And whereas the SBCUSD Board of Education recognizes the importance of learning the history and achievements of African-Americans, not only during Black History Month, but throughout the year. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares the month of February 2025 to be Black History Month and encourages educators, students, and families to learn about the heritage and achievements of African-Americans throughout appropriate programs and activities.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Ms. Gallardo?
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa?
Aye.
Ms. Grande? Just do verbal please.
Motion passed, 2.3 resolution and recognition of Ronald Reagan Day. And can I have Ms. Eden Ochoa read that first please?
Whereas Ronald Wilson Reagan was born on February 6th, 1911, and served as California's 33rd governor from 1967 to 1975. And whereas Reagan was known for his small-town values of hard work, tolerance, and importance of education. And whereas Ronald Reagan was sworn in as the nation's 40th president on January 20th, 1981, and continued to serve until 1989, a period when our nation experienced unprecedented economic growth and prosperity. And whereas in July 2010, Arnold Schwarzenegger signed SB 944 into law, declaring every February 6th to be Ronald Reagan Day in the state of California. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education in the San Bernardino Unified School District encourages all districts to undertake educational activities on February 6th, 2025, to honor the life and accomplishments of Ronald Reagan.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Medina and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please, Ms. Gallardo?
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa?
Aye.
Ms. Grande verbal please.
Aye. It's not working, it says yes here.
Motion passed, 2.4 resolution and recognition of National School Counseling Week. Can I have Mr. Tillman read that first please?
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help families focus on ways to further their educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors are instrumental in helping students, teachers, and families deal with personal trauma, as well as tragedies in their communities and the United States of America. And whereas the 2025 theme, School Counseling: Helping Students Thrive, highlights the positive impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve academic success. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California and the nation in recognizing February 3rd through the 7th, 2025, as National School Counseling Week, and encourages all schools to promote awareness of the school counselors, of the role school counselors play in preparing students for fulfilling lives as contributing members of society. So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote please, Ms. Gallardo? Ms. Eden Ochoa?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 2.5 resolution reaffirming the board's commitment to the education of all children and establishing of safe zone, zones for students and families. Can I have Ms. Medina read that first please?
It's my pleasure. Whereas on January the 10th, 2017, the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District adopted a resolution, the 2017 resolution, in which it committed to the success of all students irrespective of their immigration status, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, ability, sex and gender identity, social economic status or beliefs. And whereas in 2017 resolution, the Board of Education embraced the diversity of our students and families and the rich language and cultural assets they bring to our district, and strongly supported and encouraged to participate, the participation of all parents and families in our schools. And whereas in 2017 resolution, the Board of Education declared that every district site is a safe place for all students and their families, and encouraged the superintendent to increase and enhance partnerships with community-based organizations and legal services, legal services organizations, who provide resources for families facing deportation. And whereas in 2017 resolution, the Board of Education declared that every district site continue to implement with fidelity the district reforms such as school discipline to reduce and eliminate racial biases and criminalization of youth in schools. And whereas in 2017 resolution, the Board of Education declared that every district site is a safe place for all students, including diverse ethnic and religious traditions. And whereas in 2017 resolution, the Board of Education declared that districts shall provide a public education regardless of a child's or family's immigration status absent any applicable federal, state, local law or regulations or local ordinances or court decision. And whereas November 15th, 2022, the Board of Education approved the implementation of Board Policy 5145.13, Response to Immigration Enforcement, to provide guidance to all district personnel in responding to all attempts or requests by immigration enforcement officers to contact or obtain information from ours or regarding any, any student or family member. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby reaffirms the 2017 resolution and Board Policy 5145.13 to reassure all students and families of the Board of Education's commitment to provide a safe environment for educating all of our students of the district.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved by Mr. Tillman and second by Dr. Wyatt. But before we take the vote, I do apologize. I wanted to call the public comments before the resolution was read. So before we take the vote, I want to call up anybody that's here to make a public comment for this item to come up now. I do have more than six comments. So if you can just all come up, if you wish, as a group, you will have 30 minutes combined total. Just maybe to clarify, I know maybe a few of them coming from different organizations, so they're not all connected, but just letting you know in case, the process, to make the process easier.
Good evening, board members. My name is Natalia Saka. I am the Regional Policy Advocate with the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, also known as CHIRLA. Our office is based in San Bernardino City. We serve the entire Inland Empire. We are dedicated to supporting the rights and well-being of immigrants' communities. And I am here to support the reaffirmation of item 2.5, which seeks to establish and protect safe zones of our local schools. At CHIRLA, we know that a safe, supportive environment is crucial for all students to thrive. Research from the Center for Growth and Opportunity has shown that safe zone policies significantly improve academic achievements. Safe zones provide the stability that students need to focus on their education without the constant fear of immigration enforcement. Considering the incoming administration's vow to increase immigrant enforcement, which also includes increasing enforcement actions and immigrant arrests at schools, it is crucial that SBCUSD reaffirms the establishment of safe zones. We have already seen California take steps to protect on immigration status and ensures schools are not complicit in immigration enforcement. AB 49 will further strengthen, once passed of course, by requiring schools that obtain permission before allowing ICE onto their campuses and prohibiting ICE agents from being present in rooms with children. These state laws work hand-in-hand with safe zone policies to ensure that students remain in an environment that prioritizes their safety and well-being. Students need to feel protected while they are at school, and this measure will ensure that students can be fully protected. I urge you to support the reaffirming of item 2.5 as it will continue to protect our students and their families, ensuring that our schools remain places of safety, learning, and growth. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mireya Suarez, soy vivo en San Bernardino. Soy organizadora comunitaria con la coalición por los derechos humanos de los inmigrantes, CHIRLA. Y también soy mamá de estudiantes en el distrito escolar de San Bernardino, específicamente en Cajon High School.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mireya Suarez. I am here with CHIRLA. And I am also a mother of a student that comes here to the school district.
Quiero pedir a la mesa directiva que apruebe la resolución 2.5 de la agenda para asegurar que nuestras escuelas sean lugares seguros para nuestros estudiantes y nuestras familias inmigrantes.
I would like to ask the district or the Board of Education to approve Resolution 2.5 of the agenda in order to ensure that our schools are sanctuaries for our students and our immigrant families.
Nuestros niños merecen aprender en un lugar seguro, tener los recursos necesarios para su bienestar y desarrollo académico y emocional. Pido su liderazgo para pasar esta resolución. Y quiero añadir que como miembro de la comunidad, dejarles saber que nuestras madres de familias, de familias indocumentadas o estatus mixto, están pasando momentos de mucho miedo, de ansiedad, y nuestros hijos también. Entonces, por favor, tengan eso en cuenta, sabiendo que son estudiantes de sus escuelas.
I would like, our students, they deserve to be in a place where they, a safe place to learn. They have to have the resources necessary for their well-being and their academic and emotional development. I ask you to champion and to approve the resolution. Thank you. I also want to add that as a member of our community, we have a lot of members and within the community with mixed status. And they are going through anxiety, fear, and many other emotions. Please keep this in mind when coming to your resolution.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Renato González. Vivo aquí en San Bernardino y soy miembro de CHIRLA también. Tengo un estudiante en Cajon High School, al norte de San Bernardino. Quiero pedir que la Mesa Directiva del Distrito Escolar de San Bernardino apruebe la resolución 2.5 de la agenda para asegurar que nuestras escuelas sean un santuario para nuestros estudiantes. Sí?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Renato González. I am also a member of CHIRLA, and I live here in San Bernardino. I also have a student at Cajon High. I am here to ask that, that as a member of CHIRLA, I'm here to ask the Board of Education to approve Resolution 2.5 of the agenda to make sure that our schools are safe sanctuaries for our students and our migrant families.
De misma manera, nuestros, nuestros hijos merecen tener y aprender en un lugar que sea seguro, tener recursos necesarios para su bienestar y desarrollo económico y emocional. Muy importante emocional.
Our students deserve to be in a safe place to learn. So they can, to have the resources necessary for their well-being and their academic and emotional development. Emotional development is really important. I ask...
Pido su liderazgo para pasar la resolución 2.5 de la agenda. Gracias.
I ask for your leadership to be able to pass the Resolution 2.5 of the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alma Trejo. I am the Campaign Director for the Inland Empire Immigrant Youth Collective. We're also part of the Inland Empire Coalition for Immigrant Justice. We work primarily with youth, K-12, and mixed families, and also educators within both San Bernardino and Riverside County. We focus primarily in organizing youth, immigrant youth and allies and their families to be able to reach their educational goals. We also work closely with educators and administration throughout the high schools in the region and also colleges. And one of the things that we prioritize is creating a healthy, safe environment for our youth so that they can focus on achieving their educational and professional goals, whatever those may be. We want to really reiterate the importance of you all championing the Resolution 2.5 because we want to make sure that not only students have the capacity to just go to school and focus on learning, and that their parents also have, you know, the opportunity to come and be involved in their education. We also want to make sure that teachers and staff are not afraid to actually support their students. We've had a couple educators who actually have expressed the fear that their students are going to go back into the shadows. And I think we spent so much time trying to build their confidence, understanding that they have rights and understanding that they have the opportunity to be whoever they want, to actually have them revert back and like not seek both educational resources, but also just resources as a whole. So we really want to have the San Bernardino City Unified School District champion this resolution, but we also want to make sure that if possible, you make this resolution stronger. Some of the asks that we have is that the Unified School District does not enter with, into any agreement with state, local law enforcement such as ICE or any other federal entities, unless it's obviously required by law. Campus security should also be prohibited from inquiring about or recording any information regarding an individual immigration status or country of birth. And then also we ask that campus police should create a policy acknowledging that they have no authority to enforce federal civil immigration law and declaring that they will not participate in any immigration enforcement efforts of federal authorities. This includes campus police not holding people in ICE or not responding to ICE notifications or transfer requests and not making arrests based on civil immigration warrants, or allowing ICE on campus. And we want to make sure that our students, our parents, and this also impacts, you know, mixed-status families where the students are citizens, but their parents are undocumented, we want to make sure that they are able to exercise their right to be able to access equality and equitable education. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, board members. My name is Brian Sanchez. I'm a lead organizer with the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice, the leading immigrant rights organization in the Inland Empire with our own headquarters here based in San Bernardino. We have well over 40 organizational partners and reach nearly 50,000 IE residents yearly. I myself am an alumni of SBCUSD schools. I went to Lancashire Elementary and Richardson Middle School. And I remember them as places of safety and security where I was free to learn and to excel academically. And that is why I'm here today to urge you to not only reaffirm the safety zone and the regulations ensuring it, but to also insist that you, that you consider stronger protections for our students and their families. To ensure the well-being for our students, I urge the board to adopt the following recommendations to its regulations: affirming that SBCUSD will not enter into agreements with state or local law enforcement agencies such as ICE or any other federal agency, except as required by the law; and having campus security be prohibited from inquiring about or recording any information regarding an individual's immigration status or country of birth. These protections are necessary for creating a safe and secure learning environment, not just for undocumented students, but for all students of SBCUSD. The very presence of immigration enforcement on school grounds and interactions with school personnel should be prohibited as much as possible under the law. Again, I must reiterate, any immigration enforcement activity on school campuses will always be a detriment to the well-being of students. The very presence of them engenders fear and mistrust and suspicion amongst students, none of which is conducive to a safe learning environment. And the very mental anguish experienced by students living under the fear deportation will only be exacerbated by the presence of ICE agents or any immigration enforcement, which could lead to the overload of school counselors and increased chances of dropping out. which could lead to the overload of school counselors and increased chances of dropping out. And finally, it creates an environment of mistrust. Students will not trust their teachers, administrators, or school security if they see that they willfully interact with immigration enforcement. If students cannot trust their school administrator or personnel, it can lead to isolation, hesitance to report bullying or other problems, and withdrawal from school activities. Again, I urge you to reaffirm the safety zone regulation and to advocate for even stronger protections. Thank you.
For people that don't know me, I am here as a student, but as a supporter of ICUC and everybody that is behind me here. I'm not here just as a student board member, but I am here as a young daughter of immigrant parents who came here to los Estados Unidos to pursue the American dream. Schools should be sanctuaries for everyone, for every student, to live and thrive in a safe environment, where every student feels safe and supported. Yet, recent ICE raids, like that's been happening in places like Bakersfield and even here in our own backyard, have created a climate of fear for many families in our own community. As you may know, over eighty-five percent of our students attending San Bernardino City Unified School District are Hispanic. This fear directly affects students' ability to focus and succeeding, making it imperative for the district to reaffirm its commitment to protecting all students, regardless of their immigration status or that their families are. I urge the Board to adopt or strengthen policies that prevent school staff from cooperating with ICE or sharing students' information without legal mandate, and to make sure that administrators and staff are trained to respond appropriately of ICE agents if ICE agents request information or attempt to enter school property. I also encourage the Board to collaborate with legal aid organizations and advocacy groups to provide resources and help for families affected by the immigration enforcement. Hosting things like Know Your Rights workshops, creating, creating an anonymous hotline for families to report ICE activities near schools, and mandating consistent communications with parents about their rights and district policies, creating a safe sense of security and transparency. As a community, we are all here and we are all concerned about the emotional and academic toll that these raids have on our own children and students. In addition, I ask you to please consider and implementing a sanctuary school policy, making sure that schools remain a safe space like 2.5. As a student board member, our district values are so important to me, and these actions will reflect the district's dedication to creating a supportive, inclusive environment where all students can thrive. With that being said, what specific actions is the Board taking to address these concerns and reassure families that schools remain places for safety and opportunity for everyone?
Hello, Board. My name is Achilles Warcarzavala, and I'm a high school senior at Sangre Gogón High School and a leader with ICUC. I am of Mexican and native, native descent. I believe the issue of immigration and customs enforcement agents being in our communities have placed many families in a difficult, frightening situation. Parents especially from families with mixed immigration statuses are now terrified of sending their children to school with the constant fear that they or their children could be arrested or taken away. Schools which are meant to be safe spaces for children to learn, grow, and pursue higher education have suddenly become places of uncertainty and anxiety. It is essential to ensure that ICE agents are not allowed near school campuses to protect both students and their families. For many families, schools are meant to be safe havens, free from the threat of immigration enforcement when parents fear that, when parents fear that their child or, or fear when they're dropping their child off could lead to an arrest or separation. It not only endangers their children's safety, but also discourages parents from being fully involved in their children's education. This fear creates a barrier to building a trusting, or it prevents a, okay, I'm sorry. This fear creates a barrier to building trusting relationships between parents, school staff, and the larger education community. Furthermore, allowing ICE to operate on school campuses undermines the very foundation of the educational system. It sends a message that students and families, or not all students and families, are welcome or safe in these spaces, creating an atmosphere of fear and division. Strong policies that protect students from immigration enforcement on school grounds are essential in ensuring that every student, regardless of their family's immigration status, can receive an education free from the threat of deportation or family separation. These policies would have a positive, a profound positive impact on students and their families, particularly those with mixed immigration statuses. By fostering a safe and supportive environment, schools can create a community where all students, regardless of background, feel secure and can, and can focus on their studies. Students should not have to fear that their pursuit of education will come at the expense of their family's safety. Ultimately, strong policies and the support of mixed-status families would help, would help strengthen trust in the education system, improve family management, and contribute to the overall well-being of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we have about fifteen minutes left for the rest. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Ariano, President Cevallos, and Board members. My name is Anna Victoria Chávez, and I am a leader with ICUC, and I'm here today to share concerns from students and parents regarding whether the school district will allow ICE employees to enter school campuses. Parents are beginning to fear dropping off their children at school, fearing that they will be arrested. This fear should not exist in the school environment. It should be a safe place for students and families. Parents shouldn't have to worry about being, oh, parents shouldn't have to worry about being arrested on school campuses just because they're ensuring their children are receiving an education and have a future. This is only adding more stress on students and parents and could potentially affect the academic performance of students. This is a hard time we are living through again, and ensuring families that ICE will not be allowed on school grounds will alleviate this fear and worry. We are here tonight to express our gratitude for the resolution that was passed back in 2017 and to urge you to once again approve this resolution to send a clear message to families across our school district that they are safe to continue bringing their children to school. Thank you.
There you go. Can you guys hear me? There you go. So hello there. My name is Kevin Torres. I'm with the Warehouse Worker Research Center as an organizer. And so I just want to say that's a lot of Board of, like, education. I'm not compared to, not too accustomed to this, but that just means it makes it easy to speak and look around everywhere. So I just want to say, please continue to bring stronger protections when it comes to the immigration policies, especially since, as you, as I mentioned, I do come from a warehouse worker research center. Why is that important? Well, it's important because the families that we've been helping to learn more about their worker rights as well as learning a bit more of like what protections are going on. It's not just the parents. It's as well as the children, the children that have recently graduated or are still working in warehouses to be able to pay off the education that they're currently pursuing, their careers. So within all of that, the warehouse industry that we've been hearing is always a lot of anguish. There's a lot of fear, and it's definitely due to the new administration that hasn't even officially came in yet. But yet, it's already being seen. There's people and families that don't even go outside anymore. We have to, whenever we do, like what we call house visits and visit families and we give care packages, it has to be at their homes, where they're safe, right? And so these schools, what I've heard is they've maintained themselves as a sanctuary for these students, and we want to continue having that, especially since there is a lot of people here. So there should be like probably a mix of opinions, but at the same time, it should be pretty easy to go with the idea to continue protecting these students that are actually trying to go and create a future for themselves as well as their families. Because it's not just their name that they're trying to go up there. They're trying to bring up the harsh environment that their parents had to go through to get to this country in most cases, having to cross borders, having to cross rivers, lakes, whatever. But they really had to really push it forward. And so we want to continue having that safe space for these students. And I really do pursue, to you guys, to continue having that affirmation for, in this case, for Proposal 2.5. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Let me clear my throat. Good afternoon. Javier Gómez from Centro Migrante. We do work in the community of San Bernardino. I just want to talk about our commitment to keep our students safe. And when we made that commitment as, as, as teachers, at the Board, is to keep all students safe. And part of that keeping them safe is not, is also like having a space where they feel safe, where they can study, where they can grow academically, where they can flourish. And you know, I think it's very important for us to contribute and champion that resolution. And so all students feel safe, not worrying if they're going to make it home, or the parents worrying, is my kid going to make it home? And having to keep them at home and, and limit their education, because we want them to flourish. We want all students to flourish, as a, as a student, as a part-time professor that I do on the side, you know, teach. You know, I think all students should be, have the ability to get the same education and to flourish and to see where, where they can go academically. And I think part of that is champion this resolution and, and create a space where all students feel accepted, feel safe, and can learn. So I, I really push for the championing bill. Thank you for your time.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Lucy Aguilar. Vivo en la ciudad de San Bernardino, soy miembro de CHIRLA y madre de estudiantes ya en la universidad.
Good evening. My name is Lucy Aguilar. I live in San Bernardino and I am a member of CHIRLA, and I have students that came to this district but are now at the university.
Pero estoy muy preocupada por mi comunidad inmigrante que tiene mucho miedo de llevar a sus hijos a la escuela.
But I'm very, very worried about my community because there are people there that are immigrants and they're scared to take their children to school.
Quiero que la Mesa Directiva del Distrito Escolar de San Bernardino apruebe la resolución 2.5 de la agenda para asegurar que nuestras escuelas son santuarios para estudiantes y nuestras familias inmigrantes.
I would like the Board to approve the Resolution 2.5 of the agenda to guarantee that our schools will be a safe sanctuary for our students and our migrant families.
Nuestros niños merecen aprender en un lugar seguro, tener los recursos necesarios para su bienestar y desarrollo académico y emocional. Pido su liderazgo para pasar esta resolución.
So our children deserve to be able to learn in a safe place and to have the resources necessary for their well-being and their academic and emotional development. I ask you to champion, to pass the resolution. Thank you.
Les suplico, Mesa Directiva, por favor, pónganse la mano en el corazón por nuestra comunidad inmigrante y en especial por todos nuestros niños, por su estabilidad emocional y por su tranquilidad para estudiar. Gracias.
So I ask you, Board members, to please put yourselves in our shoes and I leave this in your, in your hand, in through your heart to be able to communicate and help out our migrant community. It is especially for our children to be stable emotionally. Thank you. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Solis. I'm the Advocacy Program Manager at San Bernardino Community Service Center, a nonprofit organization specialized in providing assistance, legal representation, and educational information in immigration matters to low-income families in the Inland Empire. I am here to advocate for the integration of sanctuary policy on San Bernardino City Unified School District. Based on the current political climate, our schools should be places of refuge and opportunity for all students. A child should feel that their rights are respected and they are welcome regardless of where they or their families come from. They should not have to fear that schools return over legally protected information or detain students for federal immigration conflicts for simply seeking an education. Nor should parents be afraid of dropping their kids off at school and risking the possibility of encountering ICE or CBP agents. This implementation requires us to not only enforce the law, but foster a culture of inclusion and support. This means training our staff in immigration laws, ensuring students and families are informed about their rights, and creating a supportive environment where everyone feels valued. SB 54 protects families from the trauma and uncertainty that comes with the threat of deportation. When students and parents know their school is a safe haven, they are more likely to engage, to show up, and to thrive. With the recent events that occurred, we would like to push schools to implement policies that ensure undocumented families and students receive the services and resources they need without recording their immigration status in written records. School can ensure the power to protect students are enforced, limiting ICE agents from entering school grounds without a valid warrant. On behalf of SBCSC, we want to thank San Bernardino School District for being the first district in the Inland Empire to discuss matters on how to protect our students and families from the upcoming federal administration. We have hopes that, that by supporting this matter, we will send a powerful message to our students that their worth is not defined by their legal status, but by their potential. We are building an educational system where every child has the opportunity to succeed, free from fear and discrimination. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María Cevallos.
Good evening. My name is María Cevallos.
Lo mío es más un testimonio.
What I'm about to say is more of a testimony.
Yo tengo dos hijas, una de catorce y una de ocho.
I have two daughters, one a fourteen-year-old and an eight-year-old.
Cuando estaba el tiempo de las elecciones, mi hija de catorce escuchó en su escuela que si ganaba cierto candidato, los padres indocumentados iban a ser deportados.
So during the time of elections, back in November, my fourteen-year-old heard through the news and at school about, you know, that if a certain candidate won, many immigrant people would be deported.
Mi hija de catorce lo comentó con mi hija de ocho.
My fourteen-year-old then talked about this with her eight-year-old sister.
Mi hija de ocho cayó en una depresión donde ya no quiere dormir sola, quiere dormir abrazada de su mamá.
My eight-year-old unfortunately became depressed. She doesn't want to sleep alone. She wants to always sleep with me and hugging me, holding me.
Ya le busqué ayuda. Ya, ya la evaluó una terapeuta.
So I've already looked for help for her. There's been an evaluation by a therapist.
La terapeuta la diagnosticó con depresión, con ansiedad, a la separación.
So she was diagnosed by the therapist having depression and anxiety, separation anxiety.
Por mi mente ha pasado de ponerle esa escuela en la casa para no llevarlas a la escuela por el miedo a que llegue inmigración cuando yo las está dejando en la escuela o algo similar, y ya no las pueda volver a ver.
So I thought about maybe homeschooling, perhaps out of fear, right? Because I feel like, what if I drop them off at school and then ICE comes here? And, you know, I, I, what if I don't see them again, or they don't see me again?
Pero también sé que mis niñas necesitan de interactuar con otros niños de su edad para que tengan una vida normal.
But I'm also aware that my daughters need to interact with their peers and at school, at a regular school, so they can have a regular work-life balance.
Les pido que, por favor, tomen en cuenta de apoyar la 2.5.
So please approve 2.5.
Para que yo y las demás mamás que están pasando por una situación parecida a la mía podamos tener un poquito de tranquilidad.
So myself and other parents like myself can have some type of...
Peace, tranquility.
Peace. Yes, thank you.
Y también los niños, porque mi niña de catorce también, también tiene miedo de separarse de sus padres.
And also for their children, because they're also scared of being separated from their parents.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for coming. Before we do vote, I wanted to open it up for discussion on, I know that there was a letter that we wanted to send home for families that are in, you know, situations like this so that they get reassured, they, they know what the district is doing. And it's, it's an item that we had paused because some concerns had been raised regarding, you know, sending out information. So I want to just open it up for discussion for us. Ms. Medina?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank everyone that came to speak, and I wanted to thank everyone that shared their stories. What I'm proposing as well is, we have this language in here to create protections and ensuring families feel safe. But I also realize we need to reinforce this language, as well as policies and the ARs, which is administrative regulations, to ensure that we are creating protections, you know, creating a safe-proof environment. And so I do want to thank many of the parents, students, community organizations, CHIRLA, ICU, CICAJ, the warehouse workers, Resource Center, and so many more, Centro Inmigrante, for the recommendations, and this is something that I will be asking our district to look at, the policies and ensuring that we reinforce, we add those languages that you all recommended, and making sure that we are creating protections. You know, we're here to educate our students, and creating this fear and this anxiety, you know, even myself just hearing the stories, when back my family in the seventies, they had to stay in hiding as well. So we don't want our children to go through that, and we don't want our families to go through that, and we also don't want to put any additional strain on our educators, who are compassionate and trying to help support our families here. So I definitely, of course, support this language, but I also want to look at how can we reinforce it. And then I know when it comes to the letter, you know, it may go in hands that are against, you know, protecting our immigrant families, and I think the reality is, now that I'm listening, is that we should send a message that, and I know, Ms. Ceballos, you were also in agreeance with this, is sending a message that we're here to protect all of our students, and we're not going to give in into fear of sending that message out. So that is, I would definitely support the letter.
Mr. Tillman.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out and speaking tonight. It means a lot. You know, more important than the resolution and the information that we give the parents are the people that are sitting here. It's the Board of Education that gives direction to our superintendent and district staff on how we're going to proceed in terms of dealing with our, all of our students. And I think you can rest assured, we're going to do everything to ensure that our students are in a safe environment, and we aren't going to do anything to jeopardize their safety. I think sometimes we lose sight of the fact that during elections, people say a lot of stuff. We went through the same thing in the 2016 election, there were a lot of talk in 2017. That's just why we wrote this resolution initially, because a lot of people have fears, and based on those fears, you would have thought that we're going to have ICE at every school, every day. It never happened. But I do understand that the rhetoric and the things that the politicians say while they're running is created to generate this type of emotion, and some parties benefit and get votes that they want because they make those statements. But I think it's important for us to be sophisticated enough to know that our main goal is doing everything that we can to protect our kids. And I think you can rest assured, just with the board here, that we're going to do this. I personally don't think, if you read the letter that we were going to send out, you still have people, even within our district, who may side with the people who talk about wanting to deport all people from the United States of America. But this board doesn't agree with that. But if you send a letter out to all households, I'm going to have folks at the board meeting, or from the other side saying, and I've gotten calls already, I got a call right after the election saying, you need to do what President Trump is telling you to do, you guys need to make sure, you watch what you teach, you need to make sure that you're ready to get on board, because he's going to take money. And I had to tell the parent that called me, we only have one president at a time. And right now, our president is President Biden. And our district abides by all rules, regulation, and local laws, and we have forever, and we will continue to do that. But I think the main thing is to rest assured that this board is going to do everything to protect your students. But I think you're better off being strategic about how you approach this. And I really think that people make statements hoping that we have fighting amongst ourselves and our district, and I really think that's the worst thing to do. I think the best thing to do is to get the information to the people that have the concern, to let them know that we support them 100%, give direction to district staff on how we're going to proceed. That, to me, is the best way to proceed. Thank you very much.
Ms. Medina.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Tillman, for always showing support for our students as well. But I do want to kind of give a little history back in time, why this was created back in 2017. So during that time, Dr. Flores, Barbara Flores, who's not a board member now, but it was between her and I, in trying to look at how can we, there was this fear, and the fear was unfortunately founded by reality of what was happening. And we have to acknowledge that many families were taken during that time. And so that's why this was created, was because we got to see, those of us that actually were involved with these local nonprofits that are here today, that, you know, we got to experience ourselves. I've even gone to... Yeah, not in our schools, but it's within our school, it's outside of our schools. And so, but, so the thing is that it still creates fear, when you see that, you know, across the street, you know, families are being picked up. So it was a reality then, and so we just want to make sure that families feel secure, that we're going to find every way, manner, while they're in our school sites, while they're in the boundaries within our schools. And this is all buildings, that we create some type of protections to ensure their safety, their family's safety, visitor's safety, our staff's safety, and so forth. So that's was, is my main purpose.
Thank you so much, and I just want to chime in my two cents. First of all, thank you so much for coming. Like Mr. Tillman said, you know, you do have a board that genuinely cares not only about this issue, but, you know, just our community at large and all of the issues that, you know, come before us. We are a board that is very sensitive and sensible to the needs of our community. And so for me personally, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Tillman, for bringing the perspective that you bring in, because that's why we're all here, right? We all come from different backgrounds and experiences in life, and I really do appreciate, you know, your perspective and being strategic, and it makes sense to me, it's logical. However, I do have to disagree, just in the sense that the type of community that I want to build here in San Bernardino, or be part of, or help construct, is a community where, you know, we send out a message where everybody is welcome, and everybody is important, and everybody matters. And to me, sending letters just to those folks that have shared concern is not really taking that stand to begin those conversations that are very important for us to have. And although, you know, we all have our different opinions of, you know, different topics, immigration, economics, you know, you name it, at the end of the day, I think that we can and we should be having conversations and making, putting a foot forward on where we stand on some of these issues. And that's the rationale for me, as to why I do want to send a letter out to every family. In addition, not every person that is experiencing fear has reached out, right? So we want to make sure that those letters do go out to families that are still afraid but just haven't reached out to us. So we won't know who those folks are, because we'd be only sending out to letters of folks who have reached out to us. So that's kind of my take on... Sorry, I really, you know, if we do get members of the community that are in opposition, you know, we will welcome them as well, and, you know, we will hear their concerns also, and, you know, try to, again, make those spaces and have those conversations that really affect all of us here, and we all live here. So this is all of our communities. So thank you. Mr. Tillman.
I really think that it's important to understand that there are people who would like to see us fighting amongst ourselves. In the letter that Mr. Argano presented, it even talks about diversity. When people were creating DEI positions, diversity, equity, or whatever, I, as a leader on the board, said we're not going to create positions with those terms, and for one reason, because they were talking about that stuff on Fox News. And I knew if we gave a title that they were talking about already, then we took the risk of being a district that was going to be held up, where people of different political sides would come and fight their battles. And we would have people in our audience fighting about things that were not going to change the everyday experience of our students. We have to make the decision if we're here to actually do the work to protect our students and do what's best for our students, or do we want to enter the political fray and fight political battles. I personally think it's a waste of time to fight political battles in a non-political organization. And that's what you're going to do. If you send out a letter to incite people, then you will get crowds here who will want to fight on the different political sides, and it's not going to benefit our students. It won't. We should be as sophisticated and strategic as they are, because the hope is that we create chaos and fight amongst ourselves. And I will do everything to protect the district from doing that. All the years that I've been here, that has been my goal. We have a targeted instruction program. And the targeted instruction program looks at targeting each group in our district in a way that allows all our students to be educated to the fullest extent of their ability. But if I would have named that something else, I would have people here protesting because of the work that we're doing. And it's the same exact theme in this experience. We had people that had, with signs that say, "Create a sanctuary," we could have called this, and I had this discussion with Dr. Flores when we did it. We could have said, "We're going to create a sanctuary district." We purposely didn't do that. Why? Because they were talking about it on Fox News. We're going after all the sanctuary cities and sanctuary school districts. It had nothing to do with what you're going to actually do at the site. But do you want to create the atmosphere where we're going to start creating, fighting political battles in the district that aren't going to benefit our school district? It's going to waste your time and your resources. I understand that, I'm the old guy, the old, going to be cast out, and maybe I'm past my time, but I really think you're making a mistake if you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Hello, I'm Tatiana Eden Ochoa from Cajon High School, and I think that, though I understand what you're trying to prevent any kind of conflict in our district, because it is supposed to be bipartisan, I think a big thing that I kind of disagree with is it's kind of like, why send resources about homelessness, or why send resources about all these other things if it's not going to benefit all of the people we're sending it to? But I think that there's people that don't know about those resources, and there's a lot of people that are not reaching out ultimately. And I think that though there might be conflict, I know peers that are like personally affected by this. I recently went to the city council meeting in my district, and I saw the protesting, not the city council meeting, I saw the protesting for turning it into a sanctuary city. And it was, I personally understand the conflict that it might create, but I think at the end of the day, being a front for students who are trying to be their educator, that is, to me, the most non-political, just saying, you know, at the end of the day, you might have your different political beliefs, but our goal is to educate, our only goal is to educate, but making a no stance, to me, is a political stance. Because by not agreeing, or trying to go forward with making sure people in the district feel safe, or that they're at least aware, to me, that's already trying to play Switzerland. And I think that that doesn't necessarily work in the sense that how it is affecting students. And I think that people coming to the, I think parents and people who care enough about that to come and give their political, or their comments and say, you know, "I don't like this," or "I don't know what you're trying to do with our district," or whatever, I don't think that's affecting the students, because I don't see the students who are going to come here and see that. I see the students who are going to get those, either like letters, or their families are going to receive those letters, and they're going to feel, in the privacy of their homes or in places that they're safe, and be like, you know what, I feel confident that my district, it's providing a safe place for me to have an education. And I think that's, bottom line, the important thing that that's trying to be addressed. So if it's in regard to just the letter, I think that if we, if people in the past have thought, if we're going to be on the news, then why advocate? No, if we're going to be on the, we don't want to be on the news, then I don't think any type of advocacy would ever happen, if they were scared to publicly show face. So I think that's where I stand on that, because I think that we do have a special, like, this isn't a, this isn't a conversation in a lot of other districts, but we have to acknowledge that this is an important one in our district because of the population we serve. So I think it's important that we do acknowledge that. And once again, just like from the student perspective, I don't think that students, it might be a hassle for you guys, which I'm sorry about, and it might be a very long meeting for the student board members that are going to be up here, but I think that making that stance is going to be the most supportive towards students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to start by saying thank you to our family members, our parents, and our students that came out tonight and voiced your feelings and your fear. You know, fortunately for me, this is my second time going through this. We went through this last time as well, and we saw the same emotions, same reaction from our community. What I saw from our school board is that we ensured that our schools were going to be a safe place for our students to go to. We ensured that it was a safe place for our families to be at, and that's what I'm going to assure again right now. That's the bottom line for me, is are we keeping our schools safe for our students and our families? That's it. And I can assure you that this board will do that. We did it last time, and we're going to do it again. There is no way in heck that we're going to let our schools become a place where you go and you're afraid to go to school, where our students, our families are going to be afraid. That's not what we're here for. We're here to inspire you to greatness, to protect you, to ensure that you have an opportunity of a lifetime, the same opportunity that my mom gave me when she was an immigrant, when she came to this country, when she was an English learner. You know, it makes me very emotional, because I'm thankful for that opportunity. And this board, I assure you, this district, every staff member here, regardless of their opinion or how they feel, will protect our children, will protect our families. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Ms. Mary Ellen Grandi.
Okay, just to clarify then, so what we're talking about is, do we blanket the district with a letter informing them about what we've talked about here tonight, about this resolution? Or do we just send it to a select few of students that may or may not be directly impacted?
So the motion for the resolution is reaffirming what we have already supported, but I've opened it up for discussion, because we, the district was going to send out a letter to all families, basically letting them know of this, but I know that there had some concerns that had come up, so I decided to include it as part of the discussion today.
So, yes, that's what we are talking about? Blanketing, or select few? Okay.
Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to everybody who came and spoke, along with my colleagues. We care about your safety. We care about the fact that, you know, the one story that was shared from the mom regarding her daughters, I mean, that is probably the most powerful story. And we just want you to know that we're here for you. This board, that's our focus. In terms of what we're voting on, though, President Ceballos, are we voting on the resolution, or are we voting on the letter?
We're voting, sorry, on the resolution, but we are going to be giving direction to Superintendent Al.
Okay. So I think it's important for the public, because the letter, my understanding is the letter is just explaining the resolution. And more often than not, not everybody reads the resolution. So this is our way of reaching out and making sure that the community knows what our commitment is. And so that is the direction, but I think it's important to clarify that, because that was a little unclear. So, that was it.
Thank you for that clarification. So I will turn it to Mr. Adiano.
Well, first of all, I want to give... Because we have a motion just for the resolution, so we can vote on the resolution, then he can, I guess, I'm assuming you're going to look for consensus on how to pursue in the letter, but I think you should, because this motion is for the resolution, and that's all it's for. It's been moved and seconded, we should vote on this, and then you can look for the consensus for... for doing the other action.
Did you just want to comment though before?
Yeah.
Right. So you can make your comment.
Thank you for the clarification. First of all, thank you to all our parents and, and students. Thank you for being here and sharing your voice. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Muy agradecido. I want to thank the board for having this discussion and being transparent about it and, and sharing not only your thoughts. One item that I've always been impressed with, with our district, even when I was here 21 years ago and now that I've returned, is our consistent focus on inclusive excellence, which is what I'm hearing here from all of our members of, of the Board of Education, that the, our parent, our students and our parents feeling comfortable, safe in our school has been a priority, and it has been for 20, 30 years that I've been involved in this district. So thank you for having those conversations. I wanted to share with the community, just so that we're clear, because some of the requests that have been made here today are requests that do exist in our board policy. The, the resolution that the board is going to vote on passing here or not passing here in a moment, is their statement to the community reassuring, reminding the community that everything that they talked about and stood for in 2017 has not changed. And assuming that the resolution passes, it reaffirms everything that they believed in, in 2017 is still in place now. What's important to recognize is that the resolution speaks to Board Policy 514513. And I want the community to, to recognize that that policy includes all of the language from the California Values Act that was passed, I believe it's 2021 or 2022. But all of those legal protections that were embedded in that act exist in our board policy. And a lot of the comments that were made, I know by this young lady talking about warrants and all those legalities, all of those protections, all of those safety nets exist in our board policy. So many of the items that you have requested today exist in our board policy. So our school district, we have been working with our principals already and our vice principals, and I know Chief Paulino's been working with our campus security officers and our sworn officers to review the policy word for word, to understand what happens if an officer of immigration shows up, what are the legalities that we can live within, and then what are the legalities that sometimes we cannot impose ourselves that we must comply? All of those pieces of the language exist in our board policy. So the board, upon their vote, I'm sure will give me direction on how and to who to communicate, and whatever communication we put out, we will be sure to embed the board policy, because that lists the protections that I believe that are covered by the law, that you are seeking for us to make sure that we know and that we enforce accordingly to the law. So I just wanted to share that with the Board of Education. One more point is we have scheduled two parent forums. One is scheduled for tomorrow at 5 o'clock right here in this room, in the Margaret Hill Room, and also on the 22nd to provide, yes. Is it 5:00 PM or 4:00 PM? Sorry, 4:00 PM. So tomorrow at 4:00 PM in this room, and 4 o'clock on the 22nd, we'll be here to talk about what are those protections under the law and under our policy, so that our parents are well informed. And so I just wanted to share that with the board. Thank you very much again for the discussion.
Thank you so much, and, and now I will call for the vote, please. To adopt the resolution. And Ms. Gallardo.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, and at this time, I will look for consensus of the board to direct our superintendent to send out the letters to all parents of the district. So if you agree to sending a letter to all parents in the district, just consensus for his direction. We have four. So that's the direction.
Just for clarification, I have direction to proceed with the letter. So I think what I'll do is, I think I'm going to make some amendments to that letter based on some of the new knowledge and information that I heard here today, not only from our audience, but from our distinguished board. I'll share the draft with President Sabios, get approval on the language before we send it out.
Yes, thank you. And then just lastly for our community, again, thank you so much for coming out. To Mr. Tillman's point, though, if we do get, obviously, folks in our community that defer opinions, let's just not get mad. You know, let's, you know, go, go out there and just, you know, be kind and respectful, so that to his point, you know, who higher up powers, they don't get what they, what they want in our communities, which is fighting, right? Thank you. Alrighty, moving to 3.0 public comments. 3.1, received public comments.
Good evening, President Sabios. Congratulations on your election as our new board president. Vice President Abidalz Grande, congratulations to you also in your new position. To our Superintendent Ariano and other esteemed members of the board and cabinet, my name is Ashley Betisalcola, and I am the president of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. This evening, I'm here on behalf of our incredible community of 3,000 passionate and dedicated educators who tirelessly work to inspire and empower the students within our district. First of all, to this evening, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge our fellow, Southern Californians, including many educators, students and their families who've been affected by the Palisades and Eden fires. Our community is unfortunately no stranger to wildfires, and our thoughts and prayers are with all of them at this time. As we embark on this new year, 2025, can you believe it's been five years since COVID? I want to extend my warmest wishes to each of you for a year filled with progress, collaboration, and success. This is a time to reflect on the accomplishments of the past while looking ahead with hope and determination to address the challenges and opportunities that lie before us. And as an association, we also support the resolution that was just passed to keep our campuses safe for all students, no matter their immigration status or their sexual gender or orientation. So thank you for that. I also want to express gratitude to the board and cabinet for taking swift and thoughtful action and deciding to close Bucuma and Kimbark Elementary Schools today and continuing tomorrow due to concerns related to the Edison Public Safety Power Shut-Offs. These measures, though disruptive, were clearly made with the safety of our students, educators, and school community as the top priority. As we look to the future, we must recognize that public safety power shut-offs are becoming more frequent due to high wind conditions and other environmental factors. It is with this in mind that SBT A eagerly anticipates collaborating with the board and district leadership to develop sustainable, long-term solutions that minimize disruptions to student learning while continuing to prioritize the safety of all. Together, we can find innovative and practical strategies that serve the best interests of our students, their families, and our educators. We also call on our elected officials at the local and state level to hear our concerns and support us, so we can implement these long-term solutions that minimize disruption to learning. Additionally, I also would like to express our appreciation for the recent contract salary negotiation agreement and let you know that our members overwhelmingly approved the ratification. This agreement represents not only a tangible recognition of the hard work and dedication of our educators, but also a shared commitment to fostering an environment in which our professionals feel valued and supported. In closing, I would like to reiterate SBT A's commitment to being a collaborative partner while also offering constructive feedback to ensure the success and well-being of our students and educators alike. By working together, I am confident we can navigate the challenges ahead and continue to build on the strong foundation for our future of our schools. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your continued partnership this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Treasure Ortiz.
I am Dr. Treasure Ortiz, and I wanted to come up and formally introduce myself also as the councilwoman for the seventh ward for our city. And in this position and in this role, I am very much looking forward to working with the school district and all of you. First, I want to say, Tatiana, amazing, like legit, that's the leadership that's coming out of San Bernardino, and so taking those positions are, i- it's just so vital and so important. And in my time, in these next four years, my goal is to make sure that we reflect an entire city. I have 12 schools between elementary, middle, high, well, I don't have high schools, charters, continuation in my district alone. And my students and my scholars go to San Bernardino High School and Pacific High School. And what we know, as I've also been able to work in the school district for years inside the classroom, is that the reality and the situation of what our students walk into every day reflects what's happening in the classrooms. Our teachers, our staff, our admin, they're our residents. Our students are our residents. And quite honestly, we have failed in so many, so many ways. But what we have also done is created amazing pathways to correct and provide amazing solutions. And I know one things that I hear from my students or my scholars that live around my neighborhood is that their access to pathways, depending on where you live in the city of San Bernardino, depends on the level of access to your education. Where, depending on where you live in the city of San Bernardino, depends on your quality of life. There are places where you live feels like Orange County, where little ladies walk at night with dogs, and there are other places in our city, in my world alone, where children sleep on the floor in fear of gun violence and drive-by shootings. Right now, where we have the, the, the east side with Double A Ho and Hunt Elementary really needs a strong investment. They are less than half a mile away from some of the most luxurious properties in the city of San Bernardino, and yet that is not the reality that they see on their way to school. I want to work with you in whatever way is possible to build up, so that what we know is that education is the way up and out. And not out of our community, but out of poverty, out of not voting, out of not showing up. And so whatever I can do, I, I know that Superintendent Marsiano has, or I'm sorry, yes, last first name, has done an amazing job in you guys bringing that bridge committee back. I want to be a part of that. I want to make sure that whatever we are doing, it is in conjunction with each other. I want to see an industrial arts high school brought, you know, college is not for everybody, but education is. And the biggest lie we're being told is that all you need is a high school diploma today to make it, and that is not the reality. All they do is move the bar higher. It's, it is not our jobs to necessarily be political, but it is our jobs to make sure that we are not politicized in our standings, so that we defer from doing what is right, because that really is the message today. Education is absolutely under attack. If y'all aren't ready for the next four years, I don't know what you're doing, because that's the consistent talk, is to make sure that kids do not have access to what will move them further in their lives, as well as adults. So in saying all of that, I'm here for you. I am 100% available to you. I, I'd love to be able to meet with principals, as, if they need anybody, because the only way we're going to do this is together, and so I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt.
Dr. Ortiz, I have a quick question for you. First of all, congratulations on your election to city council, so Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you.
My only question is, when will the bridge committee meet? I would like that to happen sooner than later. You came up here and you said that prior to being elected, and one thing I said to you and your colleagues is that I'm going to hold you to your word and make sure that happens. So we have a unified plan, and hopefully we can bring our strategic plans together and pull our resources together and make a bigger effort towards changing this city. So I look forward to meeting with you.
I'll have my city manager reach out to your superintendent.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mary Ellen Grande.
And also, congratulations also on your new post. I believe you're in the board for the Subacute Hospital, so I'd like to meet with you. Also, I'm going to suggest that, you know, just wait until you see some of the presentations our district has put on to tell our public what we're doing. We're not a secret. So I'm going to ask you to go back, oh, I'd say two years worth of Youtubes and watch, start watching our, our presentations that our departments put on, and they will blow your mind. You have no, people have, we're a great secret, and people say, well, let's do this, let's, it's been done, we've been doing it. I mean, I look at Ms. Sabios down there, I mean, some of the things that we have accomplished just in these last few years. So join us, please, but avail yourself of those Youtubes back there and, you know, take your time when you're on vacation, or just watch them and take your notes. Okay?
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming down and look forward to working with you. 4.0 closed session. Are there any, 4.1, any closed session public comments? There are none. Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll be dismissed for closed session. All right. All right. We are back in session. 5.0, action reported from closed session. 5.1, expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, effects, and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Move.
It's been moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Agree? I don't know if it went on there. It's not working. 5.2, student, students recommend, students recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts recommendation and findings of fact of positive youth development, positive youth development and orders, and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Oh, Ms. Felicia Alexander, sorry about that. 5.3, revocation of suspension of expulsion. This order revokes a previously suspended expulsion order and is recommended at this time because the students violated the conditions of the suspension of the expulsion order. The student violated the conditions of the suspension of the expulsion order, therefore, in accordance with Education Code Section 48917, the board does hereby order the expulsion of the student with identification number as listed below.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Vote, please. Ms. Grande. Motion passed. 5.4 lift readmit of expulsion of this, of students. The Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900.
Move.
Moved by Doc, uh, Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. 5.5 other closed section and other, there's, there's none to report. Um, at this point, um, do we want to move up item? What was it? 9 point, 9.2?
We'll go along with that. We have a lot of people here tonight for 9.2.
I move that we move up 9.2. Okay. On October 1st, 2024, Dr. Shanae Bowman led, lead petitioner for the Dr. Margaret, Margaret Hill Academy submitted a charter petition to the Charter School Operations Department. A public hearing was conducted on December 17th, 2024 to consider the level of support for the charter petition. At this time, the board will vote on the charter petition. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, President Sabios, Vice President Abilis Grande, board members, superintendent, and staff. At this time, we would like to introduce the petitioner and allow her an opportunity to address the board on this item before the vote.
Good evening, President Sabios, esteemed board members, Superintendent Ariano, Cabinet, and community. As mentioned, I am the very proudly petitioner for Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. Next slide, please. First, I'd like to thank your staff who did a thorough review of the petition and their recommendation to the board to approve the petition with conditions. And so before I address those conditions, I just wanted to take a minute to remind you of the vision and mission for the school. And so the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy vision is to ignite transformation through high-quality education. And we plan to do that by first, equipping families with wraparound services to meet the whole needs of all children. We want to engage students in project-based, real-world, hands-on learning to improve their community, and we want to empower students to be college and career and labor market competitive by having access to dual enrollment and the supports to be successful in dual enrollment. And if you say yes tonight to this vote, you will be saying yes to 350 students a year of being able to attend this school to receive those services. Next slide, please. Your staff report found no recommended changes to A, B, and E of the petition, which included the sound educational program, the ability to successfully implement, and the affirmation of each condition by statute. So thank you for that. Next slide. There are a couple of elements. Your staff requested further clarification, and I just wanted to share some clarification with the board. So as part of the SELPA application, you must have an approved petition to be entered into a SELPA and become a member. And so upon approval, we'll finalize our membership with the Desert Mountain SELPA. All staff will be, who are hired for Margaret Hill Academy will have the appropriate teaching credentials. There was a question about our ability to enroll 100 students. At the last meeting, in the public hearing, I gave you 200 signatures of families interested in the school, and we also built a contingent, a contingent budget of if we only get 80 students enrolled. So we're prepared for any adjustments we have to make to the budget if we don't hit our targets for year one. And we are also working with Charter Safe for our insurance, and we will make sure that we require, have all the required insurances by law, and we will ensure that we have a lease for facilities once approved. Next slide, please. Element F required your staff to determine if the descriptions of the required elements are reasonably, reasonably comprehensive. And while your staff found all the elements reasonably comprehensive, there were a few clarifications that I think are important to make. First, the organization includes both myself and Mr. Bowman, who's an employee here in San Bernardino City Schools, working for Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. We both work together at King Middle School, and it's not uncommon for married couples to work in the same capacity. However, we do understand that there might be a need to address any potential conflicts of interest, and we're happy to adopt an anti-nepotism policy because we both will be directly reporting to the board and not each other. Additionally, we wanted to clarify that anything that needs to be agreed upon in an MOU, we are willing to work very collaboratively with the, the district to, to come to those agreements. Next slide. I wanted to end with ensuring that if you have any questions about our plans, that we have Y M and C legal counsel here that's guided us along the way with this petition. And also, I'd like to invite up our, one of our board members, who's the chief financial officer, to come share with you a little bit about our financial plans, and then one last comment from a family member who's interested in attending Margaret Hill Academy. So if Mr. Bishara would come, please.
Good evening, school board members, superintendent, cabinet members. My name is Rami Bishara, and I'm honored to serve as a board member for Margaret Hill Academy. I bring with me an extensive background in school finance, having spent several years managing and overseeing school district budgets. My experience has given me a deep understanding of the financial stewardship required to operate educational institutions successfully. Um, I'm here tonight to assure you that Margaret Hill Academy's budget has been carefully crafted to ensure both fiscal responsibility and a strong foundation for student success. The budget includes a 10% reserve at the end of the first year in operation and grows to an impressive 22% reserve level by the end of five years. This does not include the two additional grants being secured, which will further enhance the budget and provide the opportunity to make teacher salaries more competitive, support, enrichment, opportunities for students, and other needs that may arise. Additionally, we have proactively developed a balanced and fiscally sound contingent budget to account for the possibility that initial enrollment may fall short of the projected 100 students, as Dr. Bowman alluded to. This demonstrates our commitment to planning for potential challenges and ensuring the school's financial stability. These measures position Margaret Hill Academy to not only meet its financial obligation, but also to deliver high-quality educational programming that will serve students and the community effectively. We are confident in our ability to manage resources wisely based on extensive experience of Dr. Bowman's leadership and our partnership with X Ed while maintaining a focus on student achievement. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration, and I urge you to vote for yes for the MHA petition, as it represents an opportunity to bring a transformative educational option to the San Bernardino community. Thank you for your time.
And last, I would love for you to hear from this amazing mom and her wonderful son. So I'll bring Diamond Soto to share a few words with you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Diamond Soto, and I'm the mother of Adrian Soto, who's a fourth grader at E. Neil Roberts. I wanted to share a part of my story as a parent supporting Margaret Hill Academy. Over the past few years, my son and I have faced significant challenges from living in transitional housing and shelters to losing our car in a fire. Despite these hardships, I have made Adrian's education a priority, ensuring he attends school no matter how difficult life gets. Adrian has had some, oh, excuse me. Yeah, Adrian has had some challenges in school, and I'm not here to say anything negative about your schools, but I will share that several of my son's needs are not being met, and Dr. Bowman is helping me with that. I believe the vision that for Dr. Margaret Hill Academy is exactly what my son needs to thrive. Margaret Hill Academy represents a chance to provide families like mine with, with the support and communication they deserve. A school where every student is seen, valued, and given the tools to thrive, regardless of their circumstances. I urge you to approve Margaret Hill Academy and give families like mine a school that will stand with them, support them, and help them build a better future for the children. Thank you.
I'm bored. I just want to again thank your staff for the thorough review. I want to thank you all for your consideration, and last but not least, my village who stayed here extra late, even though I had a taco truck in the parking lot for them. Couple of them still had to leave, but several stayed in, and they were troopers. So I just want to thank you for your time and your consideration and be available to answer any of your questions before your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, then, we can move to vote. We can move to vote. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I motion that we approve the Margaret Hill Academy under the conditional approval that was lined out to us by the staff.
Second? Doesn't look like we have a second. So does the motion die? Okay. So now we will move to 6.0. Student board members. Actually, they've left. So 7.0 administrative reports, presentations. 7.1 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress CAS presentation. Yeah, the motion died. Thank you for coming. Yeah. So 7.1 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, a presentation.
Thank you, President Sabios. Tonight, tonight's presentation that you will hear tonight is, represents the official California Department of Education data related to the 2023-2024 school year and student achievement results in different categories. As you may recall, the 23-24 school year represented the first full school year that I had the honor and pleasure of working with the amazing team across the district. You may also recall during the 23-24 school year, that was also the year where we had to, I had the opportunity to implement my 100-day plan to get reacquainted with the district, be reacquainted with the community, and to work with the community to relearn how our community changed after 21 years of working outside the district. The 23-24 school year also represented the year where we worked together as a community to put together not only a new multi-year vision, put together a set of core values, and also changed our mission statement. And our vision statement has now become known as SBCUSD Shines 2023, and it's created, hopefully, a common language, common focus for us across the district. What is very, always very anxiety-driven is whenever you have a huge transition of leadership at the top, an organization usually experiences a lull or perhaps even a paralysis, waiting for the new leadership to decide what is the way. And I have to proudly say, and thanks to the amazing staff across this district, you will see that there was not a lull that occurred, there was not a paralysis that happened. As a matter of fact, tonight, you're going to see several aspects that we can be very proud of, knowing that the course that we have stayed on is making progress, but also having the humility to know that there are still a lot of things for us to work on. But tonight, just anticipation, you're going to see that in San Antonio Unified School District, you're going to see that our district increased in English proficiency, in math proficiency, and in both of those indicators, we did outpace the increase of the, average increase of the state. Our high school graduation rate increased. Our college and career indicator increased significantly. We decreased our chronic absenteeism, and for the first time, the dashboard on the California Department of Education, based on the general indicators of the district, our overall indicators will not have any section in red. So a lot of great things to be proud of. It's also important to remind the board and the community that over the past several months, as we've provided reports, there's some other information that I don't want us to forget, as you see some of this information. Our students' advanced placement test pass rate increased this, during that year. The number of students who successfully completed dual enrollment courses increased, and the number of students earning the seal of biliteracy also increased. So having said all that, I just want to take a moment to thank the teachers, our support staff, our management, our board of education, our parents, our community members, and all of our students for their hard work. Because it takes all of us working together in unison to point the ship in the right direction. Now, also having said that, we still have much work to do to continue towards our short-term goal of 50-50-95, right? 50% proficiency in ELA, 50% proficiency in math, and 95% graduation rate. So tonight, you'll see a lot of great things, but also with humility, you'll see a lot of areas that'll be pointed out that we have to continue to keep working on, to provide support and resources to, so that we can provide the energy and motivation for our staff and students to continue to be successful. So great things to report, but also with humility, a lot of areas that need to, need to be, that we need to focus on moving forward. So with that, I just want to say thank you again to everybody, and I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Applegate to get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ariano. So good evening, Board President Ms. Sabios, Vice President Ms. Abilis Grande, board, rest of the cabinet, and our audience out there. So we are really optimistic and very enthusiastic about bringing our SBCUSD data today, tonight to you. As you can see, I have my team behind me, and I also want to thank our other division leaders, Dr. Funchess, Mr. Koenig, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, because they all collaborate along with us to be able to get the results that we're getting. So as Mr. Ariano said, we're very conscious of the fact that we still need quite a bit of improvement, and so we are working very hard to do that, and you'll see how at the end of the presentation. But we're very proud to say that we are getting gains now. So we're confident in the systems that have been implemented, which we'll talk about a little bit. And you'll see that there's beginning to, we're having closure of gaps. You're not seeing these huge gaps anymore between our subgroups, and that's important. All of our kids are making slow, steady gains, and although that, that's a good trajectory, we're not satisfied with that. We know that we can do better, and we know that we can more aggressively pursue those gains. So we have systems in place, but now we really have to work with our educators and our teams to be more aggressive in the implementation. to be more aggressive in the implementation, the quality implementation of those systems. And that's how we're going to really have some breakthroughs. So we are going to show you some data tonight from our dashboard. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll discuss next steps and some of the systems that we have in place moving forward. So I want to introduce today our Director of Accountability and Technology, Educational Technology, Dr. Michelle Cleveland. And she will be presenting the data and I will finish up with those next steps and um, any other questions you may have. Uh, we did have some places in the presentation where we will stop and pause for any questions. And then of course, at the end, anything else that you might have. Dr. Cleveland?
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, it is great to be back here with all of you to take a look at our um, public and um, very nice looking California school dashboard for the 2023-24 school year. So as we get started, if the clicker works, um, we are going to take a look at the three areas that the State of California um, gives us as metrics that we look at um, as a public accountability system. And so those three areas are academic performance indicators, academic engagement indicators, and then the conditions and climate indicator. And there are a series of metrics within each of those categories. And we are going to go through each of those um, this evening with you and let you know how we uh, look in the dashboard this year. This is what the public sees when they log on um, to the State of California's website for the Department of Education. Oftentimes, uh, it can get a little bit confusing as we start to look at how these colors are calculated. Um, the State of California operates off of a growth model. And so they take a look at the performance in each metric from the previous year and compare it to the current year. So for this year's dashboard, that is a comparison of how we did in 2023 versus how we did in 2024. And as school districts and school sites look at their growth performance, they are looking to move diagonally across this grid. So if you're in red, you're trying to move to orange. If you're in orange, you're working to move to yellow. If you're in yellow, you're working to move towards green or blue. Once you hit green or blue, that is where you want to stay. And so every single school and district in the State of California is given a designation for each metric in these colors. And so as we move through each of the metrics this evening, that's what we're going to be looking for. So what you see displayed right now is our overall dashboard for San Bernardino City Unified. You can see that there are no red indicators for any of our metrics. We have moved into yellow and then into green for a majority of our metrics this year. And we're going to look at each one of these individually. We're going to start this evening with our academic indicators. And so for the State of California, they measure academic engagement through chronic absenteeism and through our graduation rate. So for chronic absenteeism, we are in yellow. Um, some interesting celebrations here for us is that we have moved a majority of our student groups from red to orange to yellow over the past three years of the dashboard being back um, to us post pandemic. And so as the work that Dr. Bykandova and Dr. Rodriguez are leading in student services has been put into place, we have seen consistent and pretty measurable drops with our chronic absenteeism. Last year, we declined an additional 5.5%. Uh, we are anticipating another drop of that size this year. Um, overall, our rate is still high at 29.3%, but we are not seeing any increase in that rate. We are consistently seeing decline. And so uh, we continue to maintain uh, that color designation of yellow. And you can see also displayed there where our different student groups are. Um, this data that you're seeing at the district level, each of our school sites uh, did a very deep dive into this data in December. And so they're taking a look at what this looks like in their own context and making plans for the different student groups to move them across to the green and blue areas. The other piece of academic engagement is graduation rate. Uh, we increased 2.2%. We are above the state average for graduation rate. Um, we have no student groups in red, orange, or yellow for graduation rate. We are in the green and blue, which is where we want to live as a district. And that is a huge celebration for us and for our entire system as a culminating piece. As students leave us, that um, we really are moving students towards graduation and maintaining uh, that work. And we do anticipate that number to maintain and/or go up this year. And that is, I, that is our first stopping point. So I will stop here and I will take any questions that you might have about this first section of metrics.
Ms. Alexander?
Um, I have a question. Thank you so much for the information thus far. In terms of graduation rates, can you explain or kind of give us some insight? Um, I see that's increased slightly, which is good. However, do we know if these students are prepared for college? And that, from that increase and where are they going?
So that, we will actually get to that section, um, because the college and career indicator is a huge piece of that. And there are multiple different qualifiers that go into that. And that is another metric that we are also sitting in green in. And that is a piece of um, the academic performance indicators. And so that'll come later in the presentation.
Ms. Medina?
Yes, um, yeah, thank you so much, um, for giving us. I, I know that in, in the chronic absentee, absenteeism, as well as when you look at the graduation rate, um, the subgroups are placed differently. You know, like for instance, in the chronic absenteeism, um, there are, you know, African American, Asian, English learners, Filipinos, um, uh, foster youth and so forth, Hispanic, uh, two more races are placed in, in, in this one group. And so, uh, looking, is this done through the state or is this our choosing? Okay.
This is done. All of this is designated by the California Department of Education.
Well, they placed them in that one group because when you look at the absenteeism, I mean, at the graduation rates, they place them differently. So it doesn't make any sense. Uh, because you know, sometimes when you average certain groups together, it, it kind of uh, creates a false, um, you know, illusion for certain groups and then, you know, so it can heighten. So I was just curious, it was just not coming from our district then.
No, every single metric is treated separately. And so for each metric, there's a formula and a calculation that they use. And so they place the student groups separately for every single metric. And so, for example, our Hispanic subgroup, they could be in yellow for chronic absenteeism. But for ELA, they could be sitting in green. It's, it's a different formula and it is dependent on different factors.
Give her clarification.
Ms. Alexander, to your question on uh, preparedness for college, as you know, part of that is A through G. Our A through G is around forty percent. And so it's increased over the years. We obviously know that we still have a ways to go, but there are some of our high schools and we can bring that later. I know we're doing a report next month that have exceeded fifty percent, I believe, A through G. So some of them are really doing well with that.
Thank you for that.
All right. So our condition and climate indicator, uh, there is only one metric in this area. And that is suspension rate. And so the suspension rate is calculated uh, by the California Department of Education. And it is a formula that is used. We also track these things internally. Um, but what it tells us for last year, the 23-24 school year, is that 4.7% of our students, which is a decline of point three percent, were suspended at least once during the school year. And so you can see that this is an area where we still are having some work to do. Um, and you can see that even though we're in yellow overall, we do have four student groups that fall into the red. And so that work is being done by um, our student services team and all of our school sites um, across divisions to look at how are we supporting students in these student groups to move um, over on the dashboard. And now we'll move into the big ones, which are the academic performance indicators. And so as we start here, we're going to look at four different metrics. Uh, we're going to look at English Language Arts and Mathematics. Both of those are um, designated by the CASP, which is the Big Spring Summit of Assessment that all of our students, grades three through eight and grade 11 take. So as we're looking at this particular data, we really are looking at students in grades three through eight and 11, because that, those are the students that are assessed. And that's what the California Department of Education tracks as part of our accountability system. We will also look at our English learner progress indicator and we will look at our college and career indicator in this section. So for English Language Arts, we had a gain of 3.6 points this year. And we are in yellow. And this is one of the first times since the State of California has started publishing the dashboard, that uh, San Bernardino City Unified has moved into yellow um, for English Language Arts. And so we do see that we are moving students and we are closing gaps. That is what that data tells us. We do have our individual school sites looking at specific students um, and seeing where those gains were met and looking at those practices that helped support that growth and those closing of gaps there. Um, we've got about 22,000 students that this move to yellow represents for last year. And you can see our student groups that fall in there. Uh, there is a new student group that will start appearing here in the academic performance indicators. And that is our long-term English learner students. This is the first year that the State of California is including long-term English learners as a specific student group for districts to track. Long-term English learners are considered students who have been an English learner in the district for six years. So at year seven, they become a long-term English learner. These students for San Bernardino City Unified in a K-12 system primarily appear in our secondary uh, measures.
Good question.
Sorry. For your um, students with disabilities category, uh, do we exempt, do we ever exempt students um, from taking the test?
There are methods of exemption. We do not seek exemptions. Um, that is not permissible through the California Department of Education. Um, exemptions are sought by um, parents or public and those are handled on a case-by-case basis. It's a very small amount of students.
Well, then we also have alternative assessments that if they don't meet the needs, then that's a possibility that we would exempt, but there, there are alternatives as well.
If they don't meet the, the...
If the alternative assessment doesn't meet the need of the student, if the disability is too severe, then we might go down that road, but we try to do the alternative assessment before that.
But in a regular, um, let's say they're RSP student or even SDC mild mod student where they're still, you know, eligible for high school diploma bound. Um, we wouldn't exempt any areas. So it wouldn't be like, you know, on the oral, it has like, what is it, listening and speaking? We don't exempt like one and then leave the other?
No, but there are accommodations and modifications that are built in to the CASP system. And so as things are written into a student's IEP, those translate into the testing system.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. So part of taking a look at what's on our dashboard, we also want to look at our percent of students who are meeting standard or who are proficient. And so we brought that data for you this evening as well. As we look at this data, I want to point out, we're looking at a three-year data trend. So we're looking at data from 2022, 2023, and 2024. And so when you look at the arrows that are up above the bars, you'll see um, kind of the trajectory that we've looked at for English Language Arts. As we look at this, we've really maintained um, and seen slight growths with our, with our move towards proficiency in English Language Arts. Our growth overall is above the state average, uh, which is actually rare this year in the State of California. Um, we are, we are one of the fewer larger districts that actually outperformed the state growth as far as movement towards proficiency. And so what you see on the screen there is what this looks like across our system. So elementary, middle, our comprehensive high schools and our continuation high schools. Um, for comprehensive and continuation high school, remember that is just grade 11 that is represented in those scores. You can also see these three-year trends across our programs. So we have our English learners, our long-term English learners, our socio-economically disadvantaged student group, students with disabilities, foster youth and homeless. I want to remind you as you're looking at um, the numbers for foster youth and homeless, those numbers are very um, unstable. They change year to year. Sometimes we have a larger population than we do others. And so we will see um, statistical swings with both of those groups. And there is a great celebration with our students with disabilities. Um, they outperformed the average for their student group in the State of California um, with their growth over the past three years. And on this next slide, you can see our English Language Arts by race, ethnicity. So you can see our major student groups across the screen there. And they do mirror what we're seeing uh, district-wide with our overall ELA. And this last piece of English Language Arts, we always bring you our local and similar districts. So the districts you see displayed there are districts that are similar size, similar demographic to San Bernardino City Unified. You can see um, the comparison there. Uh, we are in orange, the rest of the girl, the rest of the uh, districts are in blue. So they, you can kind of see where we stand out. Um, you can see that we are in yellow for growth. And there's a number of other districts that might be outperforming us as far as proficiency. But they're still kind of in the, in the orange zone, which means that they did not make as much growth as San Bernardino City Unified did uh, with students last year. All right, I'm going to move us into math. Um, this year for math, we increased 4.1 points and we also moved into yellow. And I do believe this is the first time the San Bernardino City Unified has been in yellow for mathematics. Um, we do have some student groups that are still in the red and orange. And we are diligently looking at programs and supports and pieces at each of our school sites where these student groups fall into the red and orange categories uh, to take a look at how we can move them into yellow. But overall, we are in yellow and our biggest student groups are also in yellow. Similar to the ELA, we're going to take a look um, at our movement towards proficiency. And you can see uh, we have had an upward trajectory in math over the past three years with a gain of 2.4% over those three years in total. And we see that trend follow elementary, middle, and our comprehensive and continuation high schools. You can see that trend continue into our programs with our English learners, our LTLS, students with disabilities, foster youth, and homeless. And finally, our race, ethnicity. You can see that the trends that we see um, across the district are represented here. Um, and I also want to point out that our African-American student group actually outpaced growth towards proficiency, outpacing the actual district average. So they're at 2.7%, we're at 2.4%. And so the work that Dr. Greer is leading um, around the TIP policy and really putting those interventions and pieces in place, we can see that starting to be evidenced in our data. You can see our local and similar districts data here as well. They are the same districts uh, that were represented in the English Language Arts section. All right, the third indicator in this section is English learner progress. Now, English learner progress is assessed by the state using the LPAC, which is a summative test that is given every spring to every single to every single English learner. And it's given between February and May. And this measure tells us if students are making gains on that assessment. And so we are in orange in that area. We did see a decrease in our English Learner Progress this year. Both of our student groups, as we have two now, are in the orange category. So that's our total English learner population and then our LTl population.
And Board, just for clarification, the LPAC tests language proficiency. So that's how they're moving in levels with their language, with the acquisition of English language, because you saw that they had some gains with ELA in math.
I think the question that I meant to ask earlier was for the LPAC and not the CASP. So just the same question, we're not excluding or...
We are not permitted to exclude from LPAC.
So they take both on each section? Okay, thank you.
So you can see what that looks like across our system for elementary, middle, high, and continuation high school. And then as we dug into this data, because in the past, we've actually seen great success around our English Learner Progress Indicator. And so we had a lot of questions as this data came in. And so one of the things that we recognize is that we do a really great job of reclassifying our students. As we reclassify students, we are taking students who perform very well on the LPAC out of that population of students. We've also had an influx of beginners into. And so what we're seeing right now is students that are starting at the very beginning of their language acquisition progress. And so as we look to next year and the year after that, we should see our English Learner Progress Indicator represent these new students as they move across those four levels that are associated with the LPAC. And so we do expect that our progress indicator will move back to yellow and then into green and blue. And I'll go back to what local and similar districts look like. And even though we feel like we've got some work to do there, we are actually performing much higher with our English Learner Progress than a number of other, of our local districts that we typically compare to. And so, you know, there are a lot of really great things going on with that, with that student group and the work that Mr. Acosta and Mr. Ohed are leading. And so they're digging into kind of where we're at with our students to make adjustments. The other celebration here, and this does start to take us into our college and career piece, is the Seal of Bileiteracy. And so what you see projected up there is the percent of graduates and the number of students who are now receiving the Seal of Bileiteracy as part of graduation here in San Bernardino City Unified. And so you can see we've got 18.1% of our total graduates who received the Seal of Bileiteracy last year as they graduated. And that moves us into the final indicator that the dashboard measures, and that is the Academic Performance College and Career. And so we are in green. This is the first year that the state is publishing a color for the college and career metric, and we are starting out in green. And you can see that we do not have any students in the red indicator, our first year out for this. Now, and as Mrs. Applegate mentioned earlier, there are a number of pieces that go into the College and Career Indicator. A to G is a huge component of that. So that's the percentage of our students that are deemed ready to go to a UC school here in the state of California. And we are sitting at about 40% of our students, which is a huge piece of the College and Career Indicator. The number of students who are duly enrolled, who hold the Seal of Bileiteracy are also big pieces of that. There are nine different areas that you can qualify to be college and career-ready in a combination of those pieces. And so we increased that, actually 2.1% from where we were sitting last year. And so we're looking to continue to see that increase with this year's senior class, given what we're seeing with current rates for being on track for A to G and also the number of students that are duly enrolled.
Ms. Alexander?
Does this number represent the number of students that went on to either a community college or a four-year institution in terms of our students that graduated last year?
This, the number where it says on the, but that's our total number of graduate students.
I should say it's in alignment. That's what I'm doing.
Yes, it is.
So...
So when you see the 3,515 number there, that's our total number. And then 41.4% of that number is the number that they would consider to be college and career that met those, those requirements. And that is an increase of 2.1%.
But we could get a breakdown if you'd like to see who went to two-year college, four-year college. We can take a look at that.
Right, I would like to see the outcomes. I mean, this is a projection, but really to see exactly what does it reflect in terms of our students that actually went away to school or went to a community college, just to kind of see how we're tracking.
Ms. Medina?
Just piggybacking on her question. So does that mean, because when I look at the orange section of the career and college and career with our African-American students, is this, I'm trying to understand. So when it's in orange, is that, is that within that population only a certain amount of students made it? So because I, you know, I know there's, if 41% is in the green area, what does that calculate to? And yeah, I would like to also see the breakdown. The reason why is because we should be, when it comes to career and college, college and career, it should be a fair process for all students. So that means certain students are not entering certain classrooms. So I'd like to maybe, yeah, definitely have a breakdown on that one.
And it could be that that particular subgroup maybe didn't meet some of the indicators or not at as much of an aggressive rate as another group. So we definitely could look at the breakdown. I know that Dr. Greer and I have been talking about A through G for our African-American students. For example, they did take a little dip there. So it could be that, that indicator wasn't something that they maybe, you know, fulfilled. So we'll take a look at that. We can bring you the breakdown for that.
Okay. And I do have other questions, but I don't know if we want to wait until the next steps, because maybe that might help answer some of those.
I also do have a question as well on a previous slide, so I can either ask it now or I can wait as well. So two slides back, I think it was two slides back, on the English Learner Progress reclassification rates. So a couple of questions. I see some numbers down there, the 12,228, and then the 8,300 and so forth. These numbers represent what? So the 12,000 represent all English learners in the district?
Yes, that's the total number. Those are the ends for each of those, for 2024.
And then, so with the following numbers on there, if I were to add those, they would give me 12,228? Okay.
Oh, Stephen, he's behind me, but yes, they should.
The next question that I have is, by what grade, by what grade level should students be reclassifying?
We are looking to reclassify them by sixth grade if they're in elementary. We really don't want them going on to middle school not being reclassified if they've been with us since kindergarten. So we want to make sure that, that they're being reclassified. Within five years is reasonable, because then they will become long-term English learners if we don't. And then going into middle school, they'll have to take ELD classes. And if that's not something that they need, we want to make sure that they're reclassified before then.
So I guess the question that I have is that, that 8,307 number, is that all English learners in elementary? Or all English learners in elementary that reclassified?
That's a total number of English learners.
And then the percentages is how many of them reclassified?
Yes.
Got it. So for me, it would be helpful to also see that in numbers versus just percentages.
I could put that in the Friday update for you.
Yeah, that, that would be more helpful, like for, for me. Thank you.
All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Applegate. She's going to walk us through kind of where we've been and next steps.
So Board, we were very proud to bring you the results, although we know that we still have quite a bit of work to do. But it is good news, because you're seeing that the gaps are starting to close. So we don't have these huge gaps in between our subgroups. And I just want to instill some confidence in you that the systems that we have in place are working. We really take, we take it to heart looking at data, making sure that we train all of our educators, our teachers, our principals. The staff here are very, very focused on the work that we need to do, and it's very specific what we've put in place. We do, our district is a multi-tiered system of support district. As you know, the research shows that this is how we're meeting the needs of all of our students, although we know that tier one is the most important. All of our kids deserve and should have the best initial educational experience. You can see there, we're at a great, great place right now, because we're about to get a new math adoption. You saw that our math scores were going up. So now I'm very excited about the fact that we're going to have some very high-quality materials that were vetted by a committee and that our teachers selected. And as you know, the math framework is very different. And so the math framework is really showing us a very different way of, of teaching math that is going to be very helpful for our students in the future. So we're excited about that. You can see the different levels of support that we give all of our students in both ELA and math. And I just want to point out, like I said, the math adoption, we do have multi-tiered system of support coordinators at every single school. Every school has a full-time release person that tends to these different tiers. So it's very systematic, and it's very consistent and standardized across our, our district. So it's not haphazard. These gains that we're getting, getting might be small gains, but we're very encouraged because they're going in the right direction. And we realize that everybody is standardizing some of the things that they're doing, and that's why we're, we're getting these gains. So you can see also in tier two, we are very proud of our learning labs. All of our schools have some sort of a learning lab where students get to come and get extra help with reading and math. At the secondary level, they may have a learning lab, or they may have push-in teachers. So these are additional teachers that come into classrooms to help students that need help. So a lot of intensive support's also going on in tier three. So this is all very systematic and very purposeful. And it's been communicated out very well to our principals during our administrators' Leadership Institute. And then that is communicated out to our cluster leads. As Mr. Oriano said, our cluster model really serves us well in that we're smaller districts within the district. And so our cluster leads are also very well-versed, and they're the ones that help make sure that this is implemented at the sites. Then also, we also use the multi-tiered system of support on how we support our educators and our leaders. So you can see here the different things that we do in tier one. I'm very proud of our, our scope and sequences that have been done by Dr. Venkatesan, Dr. Coker. Our EL team as well have contributed. So teachers have a very good blueprint of exactly what needs to be taught, what it looks like, all the resources that are available. So none of this is left to chance. So we have a very, a very well-designed scope and sequence. We also have a very well-defined supervision framework for our principals. Our principals know exactly like what it is that they should be looking for in the classroom. And as a matter of fact, tomorrow, I know our superintendent, Mr. Oriano, is going to talk to them about the importance of them being in the classroom. So we've had a couple of years of a lot of learning of this multi-tiered system of support. Lot of learning, a lot of discussion. But now we're at the point where it's very important, and they need to be focused on being inside the classrooms. And I know that our superintendent will be talking to our leaders about that as well. And so when they go into the classrooms, we want them to be very intentional with this framework to see what it is that they're looking for and how they can give our teachers some quality feedback. Because now we're at the, we're at the time of a quality implementation. No more talking and researching. Now we need to implement in the classroom. So we're excited about that. We also know that we have, and I'll speak to it in a minute, we have some mandates from the Department of Justice that are really providing for opportunities of English learner coaching in the classrooms for teachers and for administrators. So all these supports continue to be supports that we give our educators. And lastly, as you know, our superintendent has been very intentional and has been a huge advocate for our African-American students, as we all are, and really looking at our targeted instructional improvement policy. There are some very specific action steps in that policy that we've taken, and we're starting to see the gains because of it. I know Dr. Greer can tell you down to the number of how many students, right, Dr. Greer, we're going to need in order to meet certain proficiency, and he meets with principals, and they have student names, exactly what you were asking about, like what is it that our students did post-graduation? How can we help them? We have counselors at the sites that are our counselors for African-American students and our English learner counselors that are our equity counselors. So very, very targeted instruction there for our students. I mentioned the Department of Justice, so we're continuing to, to meet the mandates that they have for us. We're about midway right now with them. So far, we're meeting pretty much everything that we need to meet with them. Now we have to just have track of, keep track of the hours, the classroom hours that our teachers are supposed to be involved with coaching, with our program specialists, with their administrators. So we'll be keeping track of those hours. But we're on track to, to really meet all the mandates for the Department of Justice. And then the last thing too is, we have a huge push on early literacy, as you know. We, we've talked about that. We currently have a grant through the state of California where we have site literacy coaches. We have 19 of them, 19 site literacy coaches. And we're very, very focused on our systematic approach to teaching reading. So we are, we are really implementing many strategies, also keeping in mind the needs of our ELs. So we do have a very systematic approach to phonics, but we're taking into consideration the way our English learners read as well. So a lot of systems in place that are intentional. We're not deviating. We are very, I want to say optimistic. We're not satisfied, but optimistic that the systems have started to produce gains. And so we want to continue to stay the course and do the work that we need to do so that we can have some breakthroughs and some larger gains for our students.
Mr. Santos?
I wanted to go back through A through G. I just had a question. If a student is on A through G track, how easy is it for that student, hey, I don't want to take that extra year of math, for them to just not do it? Which is not in their best interest, right? But if they just...
I will, I will say that Dr. Venkatesan's team is making it far less easy for students to, for them to opt out of being in an A to G track. So all of the supports that her team is, is leading across our high schools with our site leaders is in support of students meeting A to G. And, and that's, it's not really a situation where we're providing them many opportunities to opt out, and they are intervening and providing those supports. And a lot of what Anna was talking about through that MTSS structure is knowing when students are starting to bear that direction and then swooping in and providing those interventions along the way to keep them moving on that track. And so those systems are being built. That's why we have an MTSS person at each of our sites. Our program specialist teams are working on monitoring those students. We have a lot of data systems now that our counselors and our teachers and our administrators have access to, where we can see where students are at the minute that they step in freshman year.
And I wanted to point out today, our superintendent actually tasked our high school principals with knowing who are those students that maybe might not be on the A through G track. So they're very well-aware, and I'm sure that they are providing intervention or any kind of additional support. And I think, Dr. Vang, did you want to say something? I heard her whispering in my ear.
Good evening, Board. One of the things that we are really, to answer your question, we are being very targeted, and now we are approaching to bridge the gap between the A through G percentage and the graduation percentage. So right now, the first semester results are coming out. So we are going to pull the data, literally list the students that need those extra credit recovery supports, and then have the dialogue with the person who is, first is the principal, as well as also with the VP who is responsible, who works with the counselor. Side by side, we are also working with Swiss in making sure we have their list, and every school should be able to answer how they are providing those credit recovery. Our goal is to get the credits recovered within two semesters of them losing. So that is the game, plan that we are creating for this year, because our biggest focus is going to be, on one side, we are looking at the Ds and Fs, which we'll, I'll be bringing next month. On the other side, just looking at that alone, it's a long road. So we want to make sure we are very aggressive in pushing the credit recovery and making sure that we have oversight from the district to do that. So we are going to see, and then with this dual enrollment coming in, there's a lot of those dual enrollment courses that are also satisfying those A through G requirements. You will see that A through G trajectory moving up.
Thank you. And I had a secondary question as well. I see, and I think Ms. Alexander may have asked this, but I didn't quite hear it. 41% are prepared. Do we have any tool to track how many of those actually go to college? Or is that something we are not tracking?
Yeah, we, there are mechanisms that we do track. We track through the National Clearinghouse. We do track that data. And so we can take a look at what students have input in there, and that information feeds back to us, and we can provide that too in a Friday update. Happy to do that.
There is a two-year delay in the, in those metrics. So you won't know last-year students this year. You have to wait for next year to see how many of them entered into a two-year college and how many entered into a four-year. how many of them entered into a two-year college and how many, um, entered into a four-year. The moment they graduate San Bernardino City Unified School District, the ninety-two percent, ninety-two point five percent of our students can go to a college, not necessarily a four-year, but they can go into a two-year system and then they can actually move on to the four-year college. So every student has the opportunity.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you for that. Um, on those same lines, while you brought that up, it, that ninety-two percent, they're prepared to go to college and then the data that we received back is two years, two years out. Are we able to track their success once they go away to college or community college to make sure that they're properly matriculating?
Be, that more of the AET, right now, we have that, uh, clearinghouse. The data that we can have is how many students two years back that graduated from San Bernardino City Unified went to a two-year college and how many of our students went to a four-year college? That is the data we have and beyond which we still don't have, but California is actually working on something that could provide a K-16 trajectory. So I think once we have the databank, we should be able to be more clear about how those students progress. But again, by our dual enrollment at seventy percent pass rate, there's a very good chance for many of our students that are taking dual enrollment and have graduated to sustain in college. That is pretty much what dual enrollment teaches them to do.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I actually have a couple of other questions. The Administrator Leadership Institute, can you explain what that is?
It's a monthly professional development opportunity for our principals, um, specifically with cabinet, with our superintendent, he usually addresses them there. And we have a supervision framework and so much of what they learn at the Administrative Leadership Institute is based on what we're seeing in, in our data. So what areas do we need growth in? All the, all the mandates, they came down from DOJ, everything that, that Ed Services and our other divisions are embarking on, they learn it there at the ALI. But it's also an opportunity for them to meet together with their cluster leads, their cluster teams. And the goal of that is to have the teachings in the ALI, have the professional development. For example, like I said, tomorrow, we're going to be doing, what does a successful or a strategic walkthrough look like? What should I be looking at? Because gone are the days where we would walk through the classrooms and leave little sticky notes, great job, you know, and it was just kind of a feel-good kind of thing. Tomorrow, they're going to get an actual, um, template on how to plan a strategic walkthrough as a principal. What data am I looking at before I come into the classroom? What specifically am I looking for? You know, which teachers am I going to visit and why? And then which tools might I use? The Educational Services Division here has created English learner walkthrough tools, walkthrough tools for our African-American students, uh, VAPA, reading, you name it. And specifically, I know that Dr. Coker tomorrow will be looking at reading strategies. And if I'm a principal and I'm coming into the classroom, what should I be seeing and what tool can I use to mark all that up? And then giving the feedback. So that, that's how intentional it is, instructionally for our leaders. They're learning a lot about instruction there and they're getting the opportunity to work with, with their, um, their counterparts and then also hear from our superintendent as well. So it's a full-day institute once a month. And what the goal of that is, is that learning then translates into our cluster leads, our cluster leads then meet with their teams and then it implements in the classroom. So we, I, I don't believe, in, in the time I've been here and I've been here a long time, we've had such an alignment with what the principals are learning, the leads that are helping them, and then how it translates into classroom instruction. I think we're very well-aligned with that.
That definitely sounds detailed. In terms of level prioritization, when we look at just the areas that are concerned, like we have our foster youth, our homeless youth, and also, you know, the special ed and African-American students, we have seen an increase. But is that an opportunity for that Administrative Leadership Institute to prioritize maybe those particular groups? And are, who's attending that? Is that, um, the special ed team?
So all of, all of the, all of the departments attend as well. And I know that Student Services Department's HR, Dr. Funches is actually doing a leadership mini-seminar for them tomorrow. So we all work together. But e- exactly when we look at data and something's glaring, that's something that we do, you know, make sure that we embark on and we help our, our, um, leaders learn a little bit more about. But in the afternoon, we have what we call unconference, where the leaders themselves are able to tell us today, this afternoon, this is who I want to hear from, because I have questions about maybe DOJ. So our EL directors will be there in the afternoon to do this unconference, which is really, they're sitting around a table and they're answering questions and interacting with some of the principals that might have additional questions. And I know Dr. Rubio and his team just did a great breakout session on, on, uh, really helping with discipline and working with some of our special ed students. And so we do have several opportunities in the afternoon for all the other areas. But it's instructional in the morning, so it's a very valuable time for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Medina?
All right. I have a few questions from different slides and I'll start with the, the long-term English learners and it's in the red. And, and if we're having students, what, if you're considered long-term English learners, i- i- it is from seven plus years, um, within the EL program. And so within those seven years, it shows that, uh, many are not showing any kind of growth, um, being able to exit that red area. Um, am I calculating that right or is this something maybe I'm not seeing within this because now we have to kind of disaggregate it more?
Are you looking at, are you looking at the dashboard slide?
Page eleven, I'm sorry. Page eleven for the long-term English learners. And the English Language Arts Academic Performance?
Oh, in the ELA.
Because when I look at the amount of years they're in, um, in our EL program, it shows that, it seems like, just looking at, just that it's the arrows in red, it seems like they haven't made much growth.
And we have had ELs, um, over the last five years make some growth. It looks like here, they added another year. It used to be six years that students were considered long-term English learners, now it's seven. So there's an additional year, so now we're capturing more students than we had in the past as well. They're making gains, but we, we do need to do a better job with that, so.
Okay. Yeah. Um, because it seems like that way, it's, I mean, it's, I know we're in, we're in the process of trying to improve and I do like the fact that you are looking at, this is, this is a reality where we're at. How are we going to move forward? Um, but when I look at those numbers, even when you look on page, let me see where I, where I saw it at, um, a great example is on page, where it's, um, three-year English Language Arts CASP meets or exceeds standards and you look at foster youth. There was some great gains back in twenty-one, twenty-two and then all of a sudden it drops. And then now we're trying to go back. So I'm, I'm wondering, when you see like those kind of significant changes, what's going on? And I know you, uh, foster youth, maybe it's, you know, they're transitioning from one place and now their, other students are coming in.
And this is also a student group where the number of students in this student group does change dramatically from year to year. And so some, the swing of the pendulum with both our foster and homeless youth, we will probably continue to see pretty consistent if you look at three-year patterns.
That there are drastic changes within that group.
Yeah.
Okay. And then now looking on page, um, three-year ma- uh, mathematics, the CASP meets or exceeds. And, and I know that we're making some gains, but when you look at, it says for the African-American portion, which is, um, plus two point seven. But maybe I'm not reading the numbers correctly. It is, um, from the red, which is twenty-two, twenty-three, it's eleven point six. And then it gained to twelve point two? It, uh, it doesn't seem like it's that two point seven.
The green arrow is a three-year, that's the three-year aggregate. So from, uh, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-four, there's a two point seven percent gain there.
Okay. So then, but then within one year, it's less than a percentage point. So I guess what I'm trying to look at is that I know we want to make gains, but is this, uh, less than a percentage point, you know, a goal that, I mean, I know we're trying to reach there, but it's...
So I will, I will say that is not where we want to be, um, at all. And as we're working with our principals in ALI, the goal that they're setting is a ten percent growth goal. And so they're looking at all of their student groups and that is the goal that they're setting and monitoring. And so as we come together each month, they're looking at sets of data. Um, currently, we, we're getting our current local assessment data in that window just closed, they're looking at NWEA. And every single month, they're looking at these specific student groups and having those conversations. Are we seeing growth? If the school site down the street from me is seeing growth here, what are they doing and can I learn from it? And that's what, when Anna is talking about the cluster model, those are those conversations that we're having and we, that is a piece of the ALI every month, is to be looking at these student groups. Are we making progress or are we not? And if we're not, then what are we changing in our adult practice to make that happen? Because no, where we, two point seven percent is not, um, where we want to be. We want us to be, see us making gains at five percent. I can tell you, looking at the first look at our NWA from fall to winter for math, we grew five percent. We have not seen that significant of a growth since we returned from the pandemic. And so our hope in looking at that is we're going to see that translated in our CASP data in the spring.
Yes. And then, um, even if you're looking at nine, you know, from that one section, which is the twenty-one, twenty-two, um, and that was like about two percentage points, I mean, to the, to the twenty-two, twenty-three, even if we see like, okay, they, we were able to make two percentage points, so let's try to continue that mo- movement, um, up to another two percent, but it didn't, it went down actually less than a percentage point. So it's like we're trying to make gains and yes, we're making gains, but we're, it, I don't understand how we're, we're going on the right track and all of a sudden it, it doesn't grow as much. And so I don't know what's happening that, and I'm, and you just mentioned that there is a cluster model that we're moving forward with. Is that something that we've already implemented or is this something that, you know, how long has it been implemented? Has it, has it been functioning? Or is that's part of the process to understand, okay, we're in this cluster model, but we're seeing it still not grow as much? You know, to, to what extent do we start now realizing, you know, what, what else can we be doing?
I think...
Let me, let me interject there. So I, I really appreciate those questions because it's important to have transparency and not believe that we're trying to sell a bill of goods. So that's my, that's why my, my introductory statement really highlighted about, these results really reflect one year of us working together as a team. So when you ask the questions very astutely, I appreciate that. When we talk about, are the, is the cluster model effective? Well, from my perspective, we're, we're only one year into it, this is the second year. Last year, I had the opportunity to analyze that system. Uh, we made the decision that we would stay with that system. Um, so really, this is the second year of implementation and trying to grow the cluster model, which the intention is to create smaller communities in an easier way, um, for the teams within that cluster to communicate based on their own unique needs as a community, right? The other example, for instance, uh, the MOU Mondays. That is a crucial piece of where our, our district can go in the next couple of years. Once we get to the point that district-wide, we can function truly across the entire district doing professional learning, uh, communities as the research shows can be done effectively, which is analyzing data, lesson design with the teachers within themselves. Um, so we're still working on that. So I consider that year two of that implementation model. Uh, a third example is like the learning centers, we use the word learning labs, but all of our elementary schools, we've committed that the research shows that that's a good tier-two, tier-three, um, support mechanism that's research-based. It was here when I got here. Last year, you know, we kind of looked at, see how it works. I decided, you know, this is a good thing, so we need to enhance it and replicate it, um, uniformly across the district. So we would consider this year like one and a half years into that system. So we've made a commitment to a lot of these systems that are really only a year in and continue to grow. The positivity that I shared in opening statement is that we're, we're seeing gains, but yes, there's a lot of areas we still need to work on. But the little gains tell us that the systems that we have in place are promising and therefore we need to build them. And the more we build them, then hopefully the bigger chunks of growth, those achievement gaps will start to happen within our student groups, within comparisons to other districts. Um, but I also want to say, yes, there is a lot to work on still, a lot to work on, you know, and we have to remember, the district went through many transitions within the last, what, five, six years in terms of leadership and et cetera. So we've calmed the ship, we have a common vision, we've committed to systems, to stick by them and not keep, you know, squirrel, squirrel, squirrel. Uh, we want to stick to things that are research-based. And then we do make the adjustments, um, uh, every month through principals' meetings. Uh, when we see something, can we do better, we'll do it better. Is it something we're, we need to stop doing? We will and we have. I'll even throw another one. I know this is a scary conversation, but it's one a superintendent has to make. Sometimes we even look at personnel. Do we have the right person in the right seat on the bus? And sometimes the answer is no and we have to make difficult decisions, right? So those are all the little pieces that, that we have discussions about in terms of making progress. So to get to fifty, fifty, ninety-five, we can't get there quick enough, one percentage point at a time, right? Um, so we know that at some point, the ten percent goals that we have for our principals is important because, you know, we need to force ourselves to that. So I validate the concerns that you're sharing, we see them, there's a lot of areas we need to work on. But the successes that we have seen so far is telling us anecdotally and evidence-based that it's working, we just need to get better. So I appreciate that.
And I appreciate your, uh, explanation on that. And I know, um, you know, I, we want to give, uh, programs opportunity as well. So we just don't want to, you know, like you said, squirrel, all of a sudden, you're, you know, you're trying to focus on something else. Um, but, you know, and I'm glad that you're making those adjustments accordingly so that way we show that we are making those gains. And, and I just say these items just so that way we can know and visually know that we are paying attention, we're trying to, we're, we still want to make sure that we're making gains and, um, and so forth. So it's just more on that reason. And I think with everything else, it's just, you know, because you do sometimes see this wave going on, um, even with other areas where, you know, there seems like they're doing well and all of a sudden they do a dip and just understanding. Or sometimes they're, you know, they're not doing so well, but all of a sudden they make these great gains, what's happening? And so, um, I do appreciate that. And, um, and then with, with regards to reclassification, I know it was mentioned earlier. Back when I was, um, part of the D-LAC, I was a, a vice president many, many years ago. And I remember the talks then, um, student achievement, um, was at a high for English, English language learners. And, um, once the reclassification and they, in, they, they eliminated some of the process, not process, they, um, made adjustments to the reclassification. And once that happened, things, you know, you know, um, went down. And you did mention because they removed those that were, should have been reclassified and that kind of, you know, heightened their numbers. Um, but, you know, just trying to see, uh, I know back then, there was a lot of pushback on getting those, the reclassification done too early is because some, they wanted to make sure students were fully prepared, uh, once they were cla- reclassified. Um, and I'm sure you're looking at that as well to make sure, because I know you were part of the, um, the, the EL department. Um, but thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Alexander?
Got my question last time. Um, you had mentioned, uh, the Math Institute. And I know we had the Math Institute last year right before testing. And when I look at the numbers for African-American students, it grew between twenty-two and, I mean, twenty-three and twenty-four, then the percentage was a little bit greater than it was this past year. So I'm just wondering, what are we doing differently this year to make sure that we continue to see even a healthier incline?
Dr. Greer has been very aggressive and progressive in what we're doing with math. So we've hired what he's calling equity guest teachers. And so we have additional teachers that push into math classes, especially at the middle and high school level. Um, the equity counselors identify students that are lagging behind in math and immediately, like the next day, there's a guest teacher in there helping students, you know, in smaller groups. So we have that deployed. And then he also has program specialists that are specifically assigned to certain grade levels to do professional development, to go to the school sites and help. So there's a lot of, um, student interaction, there's a lot of direct services to kids that's happening during the math time.
About the schools that don't have those resources, are we, um, I, and I, I know Dr. Greer is highly effective, I'm just wondering, are we being hyper-focused on those schools and making sure that there's access to meetings where maybe there is a one-on-one with the principal or having the opportunity to have that discussion on how can we improve in these areas? Because there might be information that the school site knows more than maybe the program specialists. I'm just trying to figure out how are we being hyper-focused?
Our superintendent has tasked our principals to be very familiar, if not know, our TIP policy by heart. And so, and so a lot of the, the, um, different strategies that we have in place are in there. And then Dr. Greer has personnel that also meets with principals on a regular basis, as does he, to identify students and to make sure that they have the interventions in place needed. And I know that Dr. Venkatesan and Dr. Coker work diligently with interventions for all And I know that Dr. Venkatesan and Dr. Coker work diligently with interventions for all of our kids, but also working with Dr. Greer for specific interventions for our African-American students.
Our principals are also conducting data chats. Uh, that's been a, a piece of the cluster model that we've worked on with each of our schools is what those data chats look like. And each of those data chats includes all of the represented student groups. And Dr. Greer has come out and provided that support to each of the clusters. And, um, that's what Mrs. Ablegate was referencing earlier, where we're looking at, here are the number of students and here are their names and here's class, here's the classes that they're in. Let's have those conversations with those teachers about who we should be monitoring each and every day. And so that we're looking at those pieces every single month.
Another piece too, that is, is very targeted is, um, Ms. Kimber Sargent in categorical does the school plans with the principals. And there is a section in there for a plan for African-American students based on their data. So principals and staff come up with their teaching and learning plan. And then it aligns with their school plan. Their school plan has to have a plan for their African-American students and based on the data for that school site.
Are we still doing the Math Institute or we're not doing the Math Institute?
We can take a look at that and see if that's something we might want to continue.
I'd just like to see the outcomes. The data.
Thank you. Um, it's Mary Ellen, Randy.
I'll just save my comments for the end.
So I, I just want to make, uh, I think the conversation has been quite extensive, um, so I appreciate that. I just want to, um, I guess, uh, allude a little bit to what Ms. Alexander was, was talking about in terms of the different, um, supports at different sites. I know that when we receive reports, we receive, uh, data that is broken down into like race and, um, you know, different statuses like homelessness and so forth. But I don't think we've ever seen, at least me, since I've been on here, like actual data on school, individual school sites. And I don't know what the reason for that is. I don't know if we have a reason as to why we don't present, present specific data on specific school sites, but I personally would like to see that data because, um, it's really, it's really, when we talk about, when we talk about, um, equity, right? There might be, uh, certain schools that have a, a higher concentration of like, say, African-American students or, you know, English learner students or, you know, homeless populations. So, um, that, that we may not necessarily be, we may reach the target, the 10% increase, but we're reaching that 10% increase, increase on the north end, for example, you know? So that's not really, in my, it's not really helping me really support that, the schools that need additional support. So moving forward, um, I would like to maybe suggest that we do bring, even if it's in, you know, different board meetings, you know, a little bit at a time, maybe by cluster, um, that we do bring some of that information forward so that we can really dive in and analyze and provide specific supports to specific school sites.
And I'm happy to get you guys actually a comprehensive packet that has the school site data in it. And I can enclose that in a, in a Friday update for you.
Yes, please.
Well, in, in conclusion, there's just a couple of points I want to make. First of all, uh, thank you to the Ed Services Department for the work that you put forth for today and all the other things that you do to make our district successful moving forward. You heard a lot about the ALI. It's our fancy word for monthly principals meeting. And I want the board to know that your superintendent is part of those meetings every month. I, I'm with the principals the entire time that we're there because I think it's important for, for me to be with them and, and, and show not only a sign of support, but that it's important. It's important me as a leader to be there with them and that it's not an inconvenience to be learning alongside of them. But also to maintain common language, common expectation, right? So, uh, I always invite any member of the Board of Education to join us at any of those ALIs. I think you will be very surprised at how sophisticated, uh, the work is on that day. How, um, how deep the conversations are and how relevant the topics are every month related to a lot of the reports that we do throughout the year. So, uh, happy to have you anytime, uh, to see the exercises that we do there. Part of the ALI is I get an opportunity to, you know, greet everyone in the morning, but I get the opportunity to set the stage in terms of providing what my expectation is of school leaders about their leadership and how they work with people, alongside people, and how you build team. That's always a consistent language or message that I have each month. But it's also my opportunity to share when I see trends, you know? I like to be at schools three days a week. If you remember when you hired me, that was one of the things I asked is, I wanted to be a superintendent that could be in the school sites as opposed to more of my time outside of the district. And so I thank you for giving me that opportunity. So I get to see a lot of classrooms, uh, in a given week. And it allows me to put together anecdotal trend data that I can then share with the principals in that moment and say, hey, these are great things that I see. Here are some things we need to continue, uh, to work on. So that credibility, uh, helps in the conversation. And then third, I, I just like to be a, a guide and a model. You know, many of our principals, you may forget, but especially our elementary, many of our principals are less than three years experienced principals in our district. And so it's very hard to really expect great gains from schools when the leadership at the schools changes so often. And then when we hire folks, they're folks that are brand new, which we're okay with that. But it's going to take some time to build their capacity and have people get used to my leadership style. And hopefully you start to see more people staying because they're either being hired during my, uh, superintendency, which fits the characteristics and the traits and expectations that I want of school leaders that maybe some of the folks that were here when I first got here didn't align. And that's okay. Uh, that natural filtering is important in any organization. So a lot of our new principals are going to need that time to develop. And I think if you come to one of our sessions, you'll see the work that we do to try to develop them. I want to remind the board that, um, you know, I remained very focused and I say this repeatedly all the time. What is the goal? What's, what is the superintendent's goal? The superintendent's goal is to have the Samuel Seagullified School District be viewed by people outside of the district as a serious institution of academics. That's my ultimate goal. The 50, 50, 95 are just benchmarks along the way. So we don't, we don't want to confuse that the goal is not 50, 50, 95. That's just a benchmark along the way, uh, to a greater goal. But part of that, if you remember, is me talking about our focus on developing our preschool, making sure our third grade students are reading proficiently, proficiently by the time they leave third grade. That in fifth grade, our students are being able to handle abstract math concepts. And to make sure that at ninth grade, our students are passing algebra or, you know, integrated math one, whatever we call it in this district. So some of the data that I track personally, as an example, I don't want to get through another two hours of data. But for instance, one of the goals I had was to increase the number of seats in preschool. And thank you to the work that Latasha has done. We now have more kids in seats in preschool. The second part of that was I wanted to make sure that 15 to 20% of those seats were filled by African-American students. That's a higher proportionate rate than the number of students that we have in our district. And Latasha, again, has done a great job. We're at about 15% of the seats are African-American students. The third piece of, of that preschool, um, um, focus as an example is having Latasha and her team work more aggressively to prepare kids with phonemic awareness, you know, sight words at the preschool level so that when they do enter TK or kindergarten, the students are now better prepared to work towards proficiency than coming in already with a deficit. So just those little things are not just fancy words that I threw out, uh, a year ago, year and a half ago when I was hired. Those are the roadmap that we're trying to get to, to make sure that these student achievement test scores that we see at the end of each year, you start to see those great gains. So we're continuing to focus on that. It was mentioned today, just a matter of fact, today coincidentally, I met with the high school principals. Because one of the messages I had with them is we need to get our 11th grade students more motivated about that CASP exam. Because what I see the kids that they provide and demonstrate in the classroom is so much higher than what they're putting on paper on that test, which tells me kids are not motivated about tests. That test is not a true indicator of what our kids truly are capable of in the classrooms. So we need to make sure that we're pumping up that 11th grade CASP test and making sure that our students know clearly that people are making judgments about them, us, our city based on the level of, of, uh, you know, importance that you give that test. And that's on us to motivate our students to help them understand that's not just another test to take. It's a reflection. You're helping create the reflection of not only your school, but our community. So that is one thing that, uh, I've tasked the high school principals to work on. The second, in terms of not just high school, but every principal, but specifically high school, is I tell them, by the, by the time your 11th graders finish 11th grade, you should know already what your data is going to be like at the end of that 12th grade. In terms of graduation rate, A through G, you should be able to identify which kids are at risk of not meeting our graduation requirements. You need to know which kids, uh, Mr. S, as you mentioned, are on the cusp of, of A through G, uh, meeting requirements or not. We can be proactive a lot better in order to, um, make positive impacts on those data. So these are some of the conversations that I'm proud to have as part of the ALI and working with our principals directly and being at the schools three days a week. So I'm not a leader who doesn't know what's happening. I'm at the schools and I get to have good information, uh, which gives me a little relevancy, right? When I speak to the principal and I think they appreciate it. I think we're getting past that fear stage of the superintendent being at a school site asking questions. I think they see that we're all trying to be good-hearted and that I really do believe that the district office exists to support schools, not the other way around. So, uh, I want to let the board know about that. I want to talk a little bit about, uh, a great idea about coming in and sharing some, uh, data about schools, maybe by cluster. I thought that was a great idea. I want you to note the, the, the board, the cabinet has identified our focus schools. So we looked at some schools, uh, that historically over the last several years have been at the bottom portion of our proficiency rate. So when we talk about equity approach, um, we do, are very conscientious in providing those schools different resources, more resources that they specifically need based on their unique needs. So we're trying to get away from, we have 77 schools, we divide that with the money and everybody gets an equal share. We have moved much more intentionally, thanks to the people that are sitting in front of you and the work with Terry and Kimber, to make sure that those schools that need something different, need a little more, that our budget reflects. You know, we're walking the talk, not just talking the talk. So I really, uh, uh, appreciate that statement. Then one of the comments was, you know, what are we doing a little differently? And again, you know, I could tell you 20 things, but I'm just going to give you one example, math. I know I've charged Dr. Clyde, uh, to start to work with UC Davis with their CSTEM program, which is something I was heavily involved in in my previous district, which is, uh, delivering math in a different way, uh, as opposed to traditional way, but using computer science program and coding as a way to learn mathematics and still meeting all the standards within that. The success rate that we had in my previous district, not only with all students, but specifically our African-American students was very high. So I know Randy's been working the last year and a half with Dr. Chang at UC Davis. We've had teachers trained. So we are trying to find these things at a research base, pilot them, and then start to grow them out, uh, at scale, but in a very intentional way. So we're not doing shiny object. We're saying, does it work here? If so, how does it work? If it's working, how do we start to replicate it, uh, across the district? Then the last thing I'll say, because I know we're all very tired, so thank you for your, your patience with me, is, um, I, I want to reiterate, we are very humble and understand that as a district, there's still a lot to work on. And, uh, sometimes I'm very proud when people say, is this your third or fourth year now? Because that tells me, okay, I'm in, right? But people sometimes forget, we've only been here one school year together. And so, uh, although it's a compliment, I think people feel like we're steady, we're calm. We've only really been working together for a year and a half. And, and I am very proud of the work that the people in front of you have done. I'm very proud of the confidence that the board has in me and in our team. And, uh, we're going to continue, uh, to deliver. But please know that, uh, we're not trying to sugarcoat. We are, we want to be positive about the things that we, we can be positive about, but we're not going to shy away from the obvious data that tells us where we need to work. So, uh, thank you for your attention tonight and, uh, we, we look forward to providing you more information during our monthly presentations.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out and putting all this together. It's been really a lot of great information. Moving on to 8.0, board discussion, 8.1, all about the Children's Day sponsorship. Uh, the board will discuss possible sponsorship of the Mag, of the Maggie's Kids Foundation, all about the Children's Day on January 18th, 2025.
And I'm present. Did someone ask for that one?
Um, yes, it was.
Oh, it looks like I did. Oh.
Oh.
Or last year. Uh, Alexander, but I don't know who brought it up this time. Usually that person leads the conversation.
Do we know?
No one actually brought it up. I was, I was told that if we did it the year before, we should just put it on for a discussion. So I-
Well, um, I approve. I have motion to approve. And the same amount as last year. How's that?
What was that?
Five thousand dollars. It was for 5,000. It's in the notes.
Oh, you're right.
But just, just to clarify, remember the board had made a decision about a year ago that any type of sponsorship would be brought to the board for discussion. So I didn't want to assume unilaterally that the board was still on board on replicating this. This is why it's here today.
Ms. Medea.
Yes, I'm looking at this and I'm trying to, uh, remember, um, I have to look at both documents. I'm trying to remember if this was, uh, remember there was one year where a certain, there was, there was like a third party organization that was helping. I don't know if it was, I know it was something with Margaret's program. So I kind of get confused because there's several programs with Margaret, Margaret Hill. That it was like a third party trying to help, but then, you know, in the bottom of the language, it says that they would get a certain percentage of it, you know, for helping. So I'm, uh, is this not, not the same one, right? Is this the same one?
It was last year. It did have somebody else in it, but on the flyer this year, it specifically said Maggie's, um, Kids Foundation. It did not list anybody else on the flyer.
Yeah, and the, the reason why I'm asking is because if they're the same organization, how can we verify? You know, they just removed it. I mean, you know, I, I create flyers, so I could easily remove it. So it just, so it, do we know? Is this the only information they gave you, these two documents? And then you're saying that last year we, we gave? And then, um, the portions go to, let me see. Because it's very, it, it doesn't explain to, what is it? The, the money goes to? Let me see the language. I'm sorry. It doesn't say. Uh, sponsorship, uh, is this scholarship? Does this money go to? So, but it doesn't say. Let me see on the, on the website. Where does it say? Oh, it's on the, the back page of it.
Okay, on the second attachment.
All proceeds will go, um, towards college scholarships and to support community events. What does that mean?
That's what it was. I took it to be Maggie's Kids Foundation, that event.
Support community events, so whatever, whatever, you know, the expenditures that they spend on this particular event, then that's discounted from that. All right. And then who's, who's the one organizing this?
On the first flyer, at the very top, it says Maggie's Kids Foundation presents all about the Children's Day. I didn't see anybody else's foundation or anything listed, so I took it. It was just theirs. And it even made the checks payable to Maggie's Kids Foundation.
The last time it was where the checks were going to a different organization. And then this time, these checks are going straight to Maggie's, not, not to a third party.
The way I remember from last year, um, Dr. Dottie Rogers didn't have the Maggie's Foundation really totally up and running. And I think that's why they had the other group. But it looks like this year she has it strictly up and running under the, under her.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Dr. White.
No, I just saw, I wanted to qualify what was said, and I think Ms. Cunningham did that right now, that it is only Maggie's Foundation that this is going to go to and support. And I did do a motion earlier, so I don't know, I need to amend my motion, but the motion was to approve to support for five thousand dollars.
Do we have a second for, to move to approve for five thousand dollars? A second? Let's vote. So Dr. Wyatt, motion, Ms. Grande, second. Okay, motion pass it, pass, be resolved, the Board of Education approves sponsorship of the All About the Children's Day on January 18th, 2025, in the amount of five thousand. Eight point two, Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and Extravaganza sponsorship. The board will discuss possible sponsorship of the Southern California Black Chamber of Commerce, Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and Extravaganza on January 2025. Okay, and I believe this was brought forward by Ms. Alexander, so.
So board, in October, we had a discussion about participating in the Dr. King Parade, and we are, we have over 14 schools that are participating, cheerleaders, bands, and anybody else. I mean, it's, we're there in great numbers. And I know some of us will be attending. I know Mauricio will be in the parade, I will be in the parade. And we're also receiving recognition at the, at the gala that is happening on Saturday. So what I'd like to propose is that we sponsor them for five thousand dollars. We already have, our logo has already been displayed, even without us approving any type of sponsorship. So I just wanted to bring it to the board to ask for your approval to sponsor the California Black Chamber of Commerce at five thousand dollars for the extravaganza, and it also goes towards the parade.
Do I have a motion? Moved that we sponsor?
Actually, I, I motioned that we approved the five thousand dollars.
Vote. Motion passed, be resolved, the Board of Education approves sponsorship of the Southern California Black Chamber of Commerce, Commerce Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and Extravaganza on January 20th, 2025, in the amount of five thousand. Nine point O, action items. Dr. Wyatt?
Sorry, Madam President, it was back on the one for Dr. Martin. Dr. Margaret Hill day, that the venue did change. I know maybe you've seen it on a flyer, did not see it on a flyer, but it's at San Andreas, I think, I suppose this year. So just so folks know that out there.
It's just the venue, the same date and time? Okay, thank you. All right, nine point O, action items, nine point one, personnel report.
That's presented.
I have a motion.
Moved.
Second.
By Ms. Medina, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Ms. Rosales, Medina? Ms. Grande? Yes. Motion passed. Nine point three, district-wide, district-wide math textbook adoption. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the adoption of designated textbooks, manipulatives, and professional development for use district-wide is an essential part of the articulated sequential and standardized curriculum in mathematics. A district textbook review committee composed of teachers and SBT representatives were formed to assist in the adoption process. This committee reviewed and piloted materials submitted by the publishers on the quality of the mathematics content, content alignment to standards, support for all learners, assessments, and program resources. After studying the results of the review, obtaining the voting results from teachers district-wide on their desired publications, and receiving feedback from parents and community members, Educational Services recommends the following test, textbooks be adopted by the Board of Education as the for instructional materials for mathematics instruction at the elementary and secondary level.
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Ms. Medina. Ms. Grande? Motion passed. Nine point four, consideration and approval of the amendment to employment contract assistant superintendent educational services. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the amendment to the employment contract assistant superintendent educational services under the existing contract language. The term of employment for the assistant superintendent educational services is extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract. So moved.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt. Motion passed, nine point five, consideration of, consideration and approval of the amendment of employment contract assistant superintendent human resources. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the amendment to the employment contract assistant superintendent human resources under the existing contract language. The term of employment for the assistant superintendent human resources is extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract.
So move.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Alexander, and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. Nine point six, consideration and approval of the amendment of employment contract assistant superintendent student services. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the amendment to the employment contract assistant superintendent student services under the existing contract language. The term of employment for the assistant superintendent student services is extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed, nine point seven, consideration and approval of the amendment to employment contract associate superintendent business facilities and operations. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the amendment to the employment contract associate superintendent business facility and operations under the existing contract language. The term of employment for the associate superintendent business facility and operations is extended for one year based upon the provisions of the contract.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed, ten point O, consent items. Be it resolved, the Board of Education, sorry. Ten point one, approval of the consent list. The following items are grouped as a consent list for receipt and approval as, for receipt and approval as one vote. If board members have questions about individual items under this list, they may be pulled out of the group and considered and voted on separately.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please, or any items to pull. Vote. Motion passed. Eleven point O, reports, comments by union organizations. Eleven point one, Samarano Teachers Association.
No report.
Eleven point two, California School Employees Association.
No report.
Eleven point three, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Eleven point four, Samarano School Police Officers Association.
And no report.
Thank you. Twelve point O, board policies, bylaw, bylaws, discussions, first reading, twelve point one, board policy 5141.33 headlines. The policy subcommittee has reviewed and approved changes made to policy 5141.33. If the board requires additional information or revisions to this board policy, they can approve it as a first reading, and changes will then be made and resubmitted for a final board approval at an upcoming board meeting. If no changes are required and the board is in agreement, the policy can be adopted as a first reading.
I can make a motion to approve?
Yeah, if, if there's no changes that you, you or anyone wants to recommend, if you don't mind moving to approve, to adopt the policy.
A motion to accept is drafted.
Second.
So moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Alexander to adopt. Ms. Grande?
Ay, ay, ay.
Motion passed, twelve point two, board policy 5141.21 administering medication, monitoring health conditions. The policies again has met and reviewed and approved changes made to this policy. If the board requires additional information or revisions to the, this board policy, they can approve it as a first reading, and changes will then be made and resubmitted for a final board approval at an upcoming board meeting. If no changes are required and the board is in agreement, the policy can be adopted at this time. So can I get a motion for adopting of the policy?
I'll second that.
So moved by Ms. Grande and second by Ms. Medina to adopt. Motion passed, thirteen point O, reports and comments. Thirteen point one, board member comments. I will start with Ms. Medina.
Um, no comments. It's just, has been a long day, so I'll have some ready for next month.
Love it. Ms. Alexander?
I'd like to say Happy New Year to everybody. And also just wanted to give my heartfelt, I guess, I guess, prayers to the people that have been impacted in Palisades and Pasadena, Altadena, even there are some other surrounding areas that were impacted. It's just, it's a horrible situation, but I know that Superintendent Ariano has reached out to the school districts to see how we can be of support, because there's a lot of lives that have been impacted. And if there's a way that we can support the schools, I mean, the scholars in any way, that would be great. And look forward to hearing what that is, that what we can do to support the surrounding cities. So really, that's what I wanted to put out there, you know, I'm really concerned, and you know, we have a lot of scholars that have been displaced. Not our scholars, but you know, community around us, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Thank you. No comments tonight.
Mr. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. Unfortunately, I have a few, so I'll take everybody else's time. Just kidding. I'll try to make it quick. This was fortunate to participate in the Highland Boxing Club Annual Toy Drive, which many of our students participated in. Great event. And then I just want to say congratulations to our newly elected council members. As I mentioned earlier, Dr. Ortiz, I expect us to set up a bridge committee meeting sooner than later. So I want to make sure that's put out there now, and then hopefully on our end, we can reach out to them and make it happen, because we need to work together on all of that. Was able to work with actually our newest board member, Mr. Santos, here on our new board members, a boardsmanship training. So he was an outstanding member and student, just want to let you guys know that. He was very attentive and did a great job, but that was a lot of fun, too. Want to say thank you to our facilities team, Mr. Koenig, you, and Mr. Pace. I think I'm forgetting one other gentleman that I, we often get to meet with, but forgive me for not remembering his name, but just, and then our facility subcommittee as well. We've been meeting a lot lately on a lot of items, and I think we're making a lot of progress on, you know, some of the things that we're working on. And then also the, the team for allowing me to do a quick walkthrough of our new community center welcoming center, whatever that thing it's called, it's a big name, but Community Welcome Resource Center. And wow, is all I could say, you know, the, the team, our district is definitely delivering on, I would say, state-of-the-art facilities on the welcome center. It is going to be amazing. I just got to see the skeleton of it, really. I didn't get to see the cool stuff that's coming in there later, but it's well on its way. So great job there. They had some other ideas on adjacent places, but I'll let them bring that surprise maybe later, so, but good stuff. Got to do a quick meeting with actually Garner himself and some of his team, and real nice tour, just wanted to thank them for their support and also our support of them. I know you guys have supported them in the past, and you know, they're doing even bigger and greater things and super excited about, they're getting ready to launch and do a grand opening for Garner's Garage. I'll bring that back when the time comes, but that's really targeting and working with our foster youth and homeless students. So excited about that. And then, boy, I got to go to a really nice workshop with some of our staff and students over at Pacific High School. I say, thank you to Eric Hartworth and CJ, some of the teachers over there, working with Cal Berkeley, and also our local government, in this case, is one of our city planners was there. And they're working on how do we tie civics and economics into all subjects, which across the curriculum. But that was cool, but was even more impressive. Some of you have already seen it, and I had not until now, was some of our new classrooms. Our biomed classrooms are just, I mean, they were just off the charts stunning. I couldn't believe how, how nice they were. When you talk about state-of-the-art and world-class classrooms, those were at the best. And I still didn't get to see the, the transportation program, but looking forward to that, but wow, it was, it was just amazing. I'll tell you what, to be able to be a teacher in those classes and students, it feels like you're actually at Loma Linda University. Because some of you have probably been to the gateway. Because some of you have probably been to the Gateway Facility, which is right here by, I think, San Manuel Stadium. That we have a partnership with Loma Linda and the labs in there and the classrooms were even nicer than the ones at that college. That's all I could say. They're just stupendous. And then I was able to work with our local county board supervisor, Mr. Baca Jr. On, we did a teen trafficking workshop. And that was really nice and surprising. A lot of students had attended it. And I was in a different city and district, so I'd like to see us have that over here to continue to keep human trafficking at the forefront of our safety of our students here and our youth. We don't have to drive far and we'll probably pass unfortunate incidents on the way home today when we leave this facility. And I, you know, I would just say this, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable to drive home and see such tragedies happening with our young ladies and in many cases, young men. So I'd like to make sure that we bring that back to the forefront. And I know there was also hopefully some other presentations that we could continue to bring forward such as Void. I know Mr. Ariano, Superintendent Ariano, Mr. Matier were looking at that, but that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Marielle Grandi?
Okay, thank you. And I'm halfway through my first term. And I'm still really excited about this job and I apologize ahead of time for sending you my best ideas in the middle of the night. If I haven't done it, then you're going to be probably getting one this year. I would just kind of try to be even. Also like sometimes four in the morning, but please don't respond. Don't, don't encourage me, okay? But I just know that at 75, I sometimes may not remember later. So it's time is of the essence. And I'm filled with ideas because this last two years I've been busy attending many conferences, many workshops. This is all new to me. So I come back filled with all these wonderful ideas. You're going to be hearing more from me about science of reading and then AI, which our poor superintendent, I've already given a big earful. Some things too, also I wanted to hear more about, I didn't want to add anymore, but I want to hear, I'll make sure that our teachers are getting the professional development that they need for all those new math curriculums. I remember as a teacher getting big boxes of curriculum and no professional development along with it. So that box pretty much stayed off in the corner for a long time. Also demonstration teachers, I didn't see that, hear them mentioned. Maybe their names have been changed to protect the innocent. I'm not sure. But I didn't see that particular term, so I would like to know where they are. This year I'm going to get really serious about my hobbies. I am a practicing ventriloquist, so this year I'm trying to learn to sing with my puppet so I can have my puppet sing I Got a Girl Crush and you know, the story by Brandy. So I want to, you know, work into a, a spot there at the UO Lamp lighter one of these nights. So anyway, so on that note, I'll, I'll end it. And I also have other hobbies, but that's my most serious one I take seriously. I'm going to be going to the Vent Haven Convention in Kentucky in July. And I'll say hi to Darcy Lynn and Terry Veder and all those guys for you. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Grande. And for me, I do have a couple comments myself as well. First of all, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome back. Lucky you. I started work last week. Anyway, I do also want to apologize to, just publicly on my behalf to the CSOs that came last board meeting to make public comment. I know that there was some confusion at the time onto whether or not time could be yielded or not. And after reviewing the board policy, I, there, there isn't any specific language on there that says that it's not allowed. So moving forward and, and it does give the president discretion to kind of discretion, you know, with that. So I will be, at least for this year, holding public comments the way I, we did today. So if there are six or more speakers, you know, they, they will be allowed to yield time and so forth. So if the board wishes to make, you know, does not, you know, want that to be the case, and I encourage us all to, you know, kind of move forward and make that change. So that's just kind of like an FYI. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Evan Scott, I believe is a teacher over at Pacific High School for sending me an email and inviting me over to Pacific for their high school winter family festival, December 18th. And also thank you to Dr. Raymundo principal over there as well. It was fantastic. They, their festival, it was just great. It's a place for students to, you know, come to have. They were playing some, you know, DJ music there as well. And you know, they had all of their pathways. I think it was student-led. So that was really nice to see. She took the opportunity to allow me to kind of tour the campus a little bit and see their, their truck transportation, thank you, facilities. Yeah, their CTE and it was just phenomenal. I was so, so impressed. I had not had the chance to go and visit. So I was really just, I, I just thank you so much. I had a great time there and I took Dr. Raymundo out to dance on the dance floor too, were dancing Gallo Dorado. So there may be some videos, you know, around, around somewhere in the web. Also, I wanted to also, a little while back, I had gotten board consensus, if you guys remember, on moving forward with the, you know, developing a board governance handbook. And you know, consensus was granted. I, at this, at this point would like for consensus to be able to move forward and actually kind of directing the superintendent to kind of get started with that, with that work and that process, you know, seeking out possible, you know, maybe a consultant or something like that and start, you know, setting up specific days. So if I can get that. Awesome. So we have consensus for that. And then I also met with the superintendent over the break. One of the things that we, that we had discussed at the time that I would like to also kind of bring up is selecting maybe one, two, or even three topics for the year where the board can dive a little bit deeper into a specific area. So whether that's student discipline, you know, the youth development department, positive youth development, or whether that be like early literacy, you know, whatever your interest is. Maybe outside of a regularly scheduled board meeting so that we have more time to kind of dive in and really ask questions and get more information. So if we have consensus for that, then we'll be good to move forward. And then you'll be sending us maybe
the board for, I can serve the board on topics.
So, so look out for an email with a possible survey on different topics that you, that would interest you. I think that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Just very quick, Happy New Year to everybody and Hardy Brown Jr. wins Community Member of the Year for still being here at 11:30 at night, man. Very good to see you. Just, I wanted to respond to a few comments. Pasadena, thank you very much, Board Member Alexander, for, for bringing it up. So I have been in communication with the executive director of AXA now on a couple occasions, just seeing, he has direct communication with superintendent. And his answer, just as of a couple hours ago was, I've been in touch with the soup and she was very touched by the outpouring and support of the very different districts. She said there is no specific needs right now other than just asking people to donate to all major relief agencies that are, are being publicized. She told me she would reach out if that changes. AXA itself are just asking people to donate to American Red Cross or any other philanthropic effort to support the Los Angeles Fire Department. So that was a response at the moment. So I wanted you to know that I followed up on that. You bet. And then Board Member Wyatt, I have made my intention made to Rochelle Clayton, who is the interim city manager. And so I did meet with her a couple of months ago and I did ask that we wanted that meeting to happen. She indicated to me that once she became the actual city manager, then she would start to actually schedule those meetings. So I made the same face, but that was the response. I wanted you to know that I've been follow-up on it, that I've been pushing it. She's willing to do it, but she's not a full-time employee yet at this point. So for whatever reasons, yeah. So I'm sure there's some internal reasons, but she's amenable and excited and personally, my own personal, I, I wish the city board would accept her because she, she does a good job, but that's, that's their job. But anyway, and Myra was talking earlier about public participation. So in case you're interested, it's bylaw 9323. It's at your seat. It's actually item number five. That's what she was speaking to. So that's the current bylaw as to how public participation time is managed. So if there are any changes that you'd like to suggest, you can read that and then the suggestion can come. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. 14.0 summary of board members' requests. 14.1 review of requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Mrs. Alexander and Mr. Santos. She requested to see the breakdown of students who went to college from the CASP presentation. And Mrs. Mrs. Applegate will be providing this information via Friday update. President Sabayos requested for the EL reclassification. She would like to see the numbers as well as the percentages. Mrs. Alexander requested to see the growth from the 2324 school year, specifically what we are doing this year to make sure we continue to see a healthy incline. President Sabayos is requesting to see data by individual school sites and Mrs. Applegate will be providing this via Friday update. Vice President Grande requested to hear that teachers are getting more professional development on math specifically and asked for more information on the demonstration teachers. President Sabayos would like for consensus and to direct the superintendent on working together on drafting a board governance handbook. And that is it. Thank you.
Awesome. 15.0 meeting adjourned.
No adjourn. Second.
Meeting adjourned.